I would like to call the January 20th, 2015 Longmont City Council Open Forum to order. Could you please start with the roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley, Christensen, Finley, Levison.
Here, ready to rock.
Moore, Santos. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, let's stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sarah, is there any special reports or presentations tonight?
There is not, Mayor.
Okay, I guess we'll start with open forum. We'll now begin our open forum. Each member of the public will have five minutes to share their thoughts about anything on their minds. Please state your name and address before beginning to speak. So we'll start with Robin Harre, H-A-R-E-E. Maybe that's Robin Harre.
I'm going to test this, make sure. I'm Carmen Ramirez, I'm going to serve as interpreter for tonight.
Okay.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Soy Robin Herine.
This is Robin Herine.
Soy un nuevo vecino...
He wants to stand. He's more comfortable standing.
Okay. Soy un vecino... Soy un vecino de Longmont, un nuevo vecino de Longmont, vivo en la calle Gay.
He's a new...
108.
Díganme la dirección de nuevo.
Gay, G-A-Y.
Uh huh.
108.
So he lives at 1108 Gay Street? He's a new neighbor.
Buenas noches a todos ustedes.
Good evening to all of you.
Y buenas noches a los vecinos.
And good evening to all our neighbors here present.
Ah, yo soy de Perú.
He's from Peru.
Del Cusco, Peru.
Cusco, Peru.
Y realmente traigo esta noche una preocupación para ustedes, una preocupación que tenemos en nuestra comunidad hispana.
So I bring to you tonight a concern that we have in the Hispanic community.
Y qué bueno que lo voy a presentar a inicios de año, en el mes de enero.
And I'm glad that I'm presenting it at the beginning of the year.
Porque después de las últimas elecciones que han habido en el país.
Because after the last elections that happened in this country.
Y que hemos visto el triunfo del partido republicano en el país.
And we've seen the triumph of the Republican Party.
Y en el estado de Colorado.
In the state of Colorado also.
Hay una gran preocupación en nuestra comunidad.
There's a big concern in our community.
Sobre las acciones que este partido.
Regarding the actions of this party.
Va a desarrollar en contra de nuestra comunidad.
Will take against this community.
Ya está sucediendo en Aurora.
It's now happening in Aurora.
In Greeley.
In Greeley.
Ustedes conocerán a Ken Buck.
And Ken Buck, you know Ken Buck.
Y al señor Tontan Credo.
And also Tom Tontan Credo.
Que definitivamente no es de nuestro agrado.
And definitely is not agreeable to the Hispanic community.
Y que actualmente.
And actually.
Van a desarrollar acciones en contra de nuestra comunidad hispana.
They're going to develop actions against the Hispanic community.
Y realmente nos sentimos preocupados.
And we are really concerned.
Porque en los condados.
Because in the counties.
En las diferentes ciudades.
In the different cities.
No se ha hecho lo suficiente.
There has not been enough.
Para que nuestra comunidad hispana.
So that the Hispanic community.
Tenga una participación realmente política.
So that they can have a real political participation.
Dentro y fuera de la comunidad.
Within and outside of the community.
Nos hemos sentido utilizados electoralmente.
We've been used for the electors.
No nos sentimos representados.
We don't feel represented.
Por los actuales, ni antes, ni ahora, peor.
Not even before or now.
En este espacio político que los hispanos y las minorías queremos.
In this political space for the Hispanic community and other minority communities.
Y eso viene por una sencilla reflexión, ¿por qué nuestra comunidad no salió a votar?
That comes from a very simple reflection as to why our community did not come out to vote.
¿Por qué nuestra comunidad no se siente representada?
Why does our community not feel represented?
Porque nuestra comunidad no tiene la fuerza social suficiente, siendo en la comunidad de Longmont el 25%.
So why is it that...
En Aurora el 60%.
So why is it that the Latino community does not fill this capacity? Where it's 25% in Longmont, 70% in Aurora.
Y también en Greeley, en otras ciudades donde somos una representación social importante.
And like in other cities like Greeley where we are...
Activa como mando de obra.
Un momentito. Where we're an active, a large portion of the population.
Activa en la producción.
Active in the production.
Pero utilizable para las elecciones.
Useful for the elections.
Por los dos partidos.
By both parties.
Aunque no les guste a ustedes.
Even if it's not something that you agree with.
Eso es lo que sentimos nosotros.
But it's felt by us.
Entonces yo vengo a proponer esta noche.
So I want to propose to you tonight.
Que en estos últimos dos años de gestión en el condado de Longmont.
That in the next two years.
Se pueda promover desde abajo.
That you promote from the bottom.
Se pueda retejer desde abajo.
That you can network or weave from the bottom.
Este movimiento social nuevo.
A social movement.
Que quiere participar políticamente.
That wants to participate politically.
¿Dónde están?
Where are they at?
¿Quiénes son los hispanos?
Who are Hispanics in this community?
Uno.
Dos, tres.
Dos hispanos, y otro tres.
Dos, tres, cuatro.
Oh, ya están saliendo, ¿dónde hay más?
There's more coming out.
Esa es la realidad.
That's the reality.
Entonces, yo creo que hay que dejar las oficinas, hay que ir donde vive, donde produce el obrero, donde están las amas de casa, hay que ir nuevamente a los barrios. Hay que retomar nuevamente esa relación desde abajo y no una relación burocrática desde arriba hacia abajo.
So I feel that you need to leave your offices and go into the communities to speak to the housewives and the workers, go into the neighborhoods and leave the bureaucracy that just is top to bottom.
Y no es porque los políticos lo quieran así.
And it's not because the politicians want it that way.
Y no es porque los partidos lo quieran así.
And it's not because the parties want it that way.
Porque la vida social y política del país ya exige una diferente actitud política con las minorías.
So it's something that is demanded of the political and social views in the community and the minority communities.
Ayer estuve, fui invitado a participar en un evento en homenaje a Martin Luther King.
So yesterday he was at Dr. King's honoring event.
Y realmente todavía queda algo de esa lucha.
There's still a lot left from that struggle.
Que hay que retomar.
That we need to retake.
Que no hay que olvidar.
That we need to not forget.
Y entonces, no sé cuánto tiempo me queda.
How much time do we have? Zero. Well, okay, we can dialogue. Ya terminamos el tiempo.
Five minutes.
So is his five minutes, because you need an additional five minutes for me to do this back and forth also. Okay.
Estoy planteando que la ciudad, que el condado de Boulder, esta ciudad promueva una asamblea, un foro social.
So he would like to propose that the city and the county assemble a social forum.
Del tiempo que sea necesario.
In the time that is needed.
Y que se invite no solamente a la comunidad hispana, que se invite a la comunidad afroamericana, que se invite a los chinos, que se invite a los africanos.
He'd like you to invite all minorities, not just the Hispanic, but African American, Asian, Africans to this social forum.
Para discutir y plantear.
To discuss and propose.
¿Cuál es la perspectiva política hacia el futuro de las minorías en este condado y en el estado de Colorado?
To find out what is the perspective, the political perspective of all of the minority communities.
Porque los partidos, tanto demócratas y republicanos o los que sean.
Because it doesn't matter what party, Democratic or Republican.
Se creen dueños de las minorías.
Of the minority communities.
Y eso no es así.
And that's not how it is.
Estamos exigiendo.
We're asking.
Participación política.
Political participation.
Y no una participación burocrática.
And not a bureaucratic participation.
Queremos construir.
We want to construct.
Greeley, Aurora, en Longmont, en Boulder, donde sea necesario.
Wherever is necessary.
Un nuevo movimiento social.
A new social movement.
Que acompañe los grandes cambios de la nación.
That will go along with the big changes in our nations.
Queremos ser partícipes de ese proceso.
We want to be part of that process.
Y no solamente cada dos años.
And not every two years.
Vota por el alcalde.
To vote for the mayor.
Vota por el comandante.
Or to vote for the chief of police.
O vota por tal senador.
Or for the senator.
Comisionarias propagandas en la televisión.
With all these commercials on the TV.
Que estamos construyendo.
What are we constructing?
¿Qué nación estamos construyendo?
What kind of a nation are we constructing?
Yo voy a terminar aquí.
He's going to finish for now.
Gracias por su atención.
Thank you for your attention.
Pido que el condado, que esta ciudad convoque una asamblea.
I'm asking that the city.
Mucho más amplia.
Convene a social forum.
De todas las entidades.
Of all the identities.
Gubernamentales, no gubernamentales.
Governmental and non-governmental.
Farm workers.
That you have farm workers.
Universidad, profesionales y comercios.
University, labor, business.
Para discutir esta perspectiva.
To talk about this perspective, building capacity.
Buenas noches, gracias.
Thank you. Tiene pregunta, Robin.
Go ahead. Councilmember Levison.
This is an evening for dialogue.
Esta es una noche para diálogo, para hablar uno con el otro.
So I would, I would like to know.
Le gustaría saber.
How I can, how I can join this, number one, and what will you call this? What do you have a name for this idea?
¿Qué sería, puede ser parte de su idea del foro y qué sería el nombre que usted le daría al foro?
Un foro social.
So a social forum.
El primer foro, el primer foro social del condado de Boulder.
The first social forum of Boulder County, is what he would call it.
Okay.
Y que dé el ejemplo esta ciudad en promoverlo.
So that this city can be the example in promoting that within the county.
Para que esto se reproduzca en todos los condados.
So this can be reproduced in all the counties.
Y así empezar una nueva, una nueva relación social y política con, del pueblo con sus autoridades.
To start a new relationship between the minorities and the political entities.
Que no se enojen solamente para votar.
And not to call us just when it's voting time.
And I have to say that for many years I've said that it's difficult.
Y por muchos años ha dicho que es difícil.
To be elected a member of city council.
Ser un membro elegido del concilio.
When you're representing not just the people that voted for you or even voted.
Cuando está representando las personas, no nomás las que votaron, pero las otras que no.
But many others in the community that live here, that are residents.
Pero muchos miembros de la comunidad.
That can't vote, but yet you represent them.
Pero lo representa, ella toma en cuenta que lo representa.
And it's hard to make laws and policies.
Hacer leyes y leyes.
When I don't have the kind of intimate connection with the Latino community that is necessary, but it's very hard for many of us to do that.
Es difícil cuando no tienen la relación con la comunidad latina íntima para saber cómo hacer, construir esas leyes y leyes.
And I appreciate you coming tonight and getting us jump started, so I'm willing to join you in whatever we're going to do this effort together.
Ella aprecia mucho que usted haya venido esta noche y que haya comenzado con esta propuesta y ella está dispuesta a ayudar con esta propuesta.
Gracias.
Gracias. ¿Alguna pregunta más?
Any other questions?
Councilmember Santos.
I have a question for Robin, but I have a question for Councilmember Levison. You sit on the multicultural committee, so that would probably be a very good start, I mean, to say that. I'm just surprised that, you know, coming tonight, it's open forum, which again is for anyone to talk about just about anything. But the, has the task force looked at this before? I mean, has, that's what, that's what that committee is set up for.
No ha tomado tan tracito como el que usted trae.
I mean, none of us have been on that, as liaison to that since 2007, besides yourself. So can you give us any insights about how that, where this might be coming from?
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you. Well, that, that committee is trying to do a lot of things. It's a small committee, and they have reorganized and had a strategic plan, and one of the things they trying to get away from is just holding events that are multicultural, and we invite everyone in. So it's getting beyond the celebration. And so some of that work going forward is really to help bring people together and do some community education. But I think that what this gentleman is talking about is not grass tops, but grassroots. People to people, sitting in, across from someone in their house or at their place of worship that might hold a forum, but something deeper is what, and a different type of connection, that's not necessarily city-driven by one committee. I think he's coming here, maybe he will join the committee too, but he's coming here with a different idea than just what that committee has done. And any one of councils, you know, we hold our meetings the second Monday of the month at 12 o'clock here in City Hall, and anyone is invited to come and participate in the committee or in any of the subcommittees that do the events or, you know, any of the other activities. And we have members from the senior center coming, we have, you know, people from all different walks of life in the community. I think part of this is, for me, I don't speak fluent Spanish, I know Councilmember Bagley speaks good Spanish. That was not in my wheelhouse when I was growing up, I learned German and French. So, you know, it's part language, but also part getting to know where the people are.
Councilmember Bagley.
Gracias alcalde. Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
A lo mejor yo te voy...
Bueno, Brian.
Bueno, yo te voy a hablar en tu idioma.
Sí, hablo en español.
Me puedes corregir si me equivoco, pero...
Una grata sorpresa escucharlo.
Gracias, entonces, yo primeramente estoy 100% atrás de eso.
Is 100% behind this idea.
Pero...
But, everybody got that.
No es suficiente.
It's not enough.
Yo tengo una esposa de México, quien como tú no habla, me imagino que no hablas inglés, pero ella no pudo...
Life is from Mexico and didn't speak English.
Cuando nos casamos, llegó como tú aquí sin poder hablar inglés, pudo aprender. Tengo cinco niños.
She was able to learn English and they have five children.
Cuatro adoptados mexicanos.
Mexicanos.
Y una miti-miti.
And one half and half.
Pero, pero yo pienso que sería una, sería una invocación si esperamos para tener un foro social. Porque tú debes saber, cada martes, este condado estamos esperando que gente latina o de cualquier comunidad. Porque tú debes saber, cada martes, este condado estamos esperando que gente latina, o de cualquier comunidad, lleguen y participen. Si debemos tener un foro, pero sería una equivocación esperar para tener un foro.
I think it would be a mistake to wait for a forum when every Tuesday night people can come and speak to council.
Make sure I also said before that we need to have a forum.
And you need to have a forum, so it's coming to that point too.
Yeah, okay, entonces.
Do I do it Spanish and English?
Okay, perfecto. Entonces, yeah, I could probably translate.
That's making our work.
That's right. Well, you gotta do your, gotta do your work.
I'm doing it both ways.
There you go.
Entonces básicamente quiero que empezamos esta noche, no quiero que tú sigues pensando que tienes que esperar un foro. Este martes, si quieres participar, cada martes puedes llegar y puedes sacar tres minutos y expresar tus sentimientos y pensamientos. No tienes que esperar. Entonces, sí, es una idea buenísima, pero no debes esperar para tener un foro. Ojalá puedes empezar a decir a todos que ya empezamos, porque esto es el mensaje que yo quiero que mis niños entienden. Yo quiero que ellos lleguen, yo quiero que lleguen entendiendo que no tienen que esperar, o no tienen que pedir permiso para tomar su lugar en este proceso. Entonces, te quiero decir eso también.
So if you want to repeat that in English and then he has a comment?
Oh yeah, sure. Basically, I said, I think it would be a big mistake for him to leave tonight, thinking that the Hispanic community, or any minority community, has to ask for a forum. I think we need to have the forum. But I also think that, you know, I think it's a, what a terrible feeling it is to have to ask permission to participate in the political process. And so I said, what I would tell my children, who are Latino, is to take your place, don't wait. And I invited them to come anytime and participate. And I would hope that anybody would, although I also realize that many people don't feel comfortable doing so. Entonces, le voy a quedar.
Tiene un comentario, I'm sorry. Yes, one last comment, un comentario.
Solamente gracias a Gil. Señor Santos, está bien. Yo creo que el condado tiene que cambiar esa, esa palabra de multiculturalidad.
I think that the county needs to change the multicultural term.
Interculturalidad.
There's not an intercultural.
Hay dos cosas, dos conceptos totalmente diferentes.
Two different concepts.
Existe la multiculturalidad como espacio social, pero no hay una interrelación. Interculturalidad es otra cosa.
So intercultural.
Lo que estamos proponiendo es que esa comisión se cambie incluso de nombre, para que empiece una nueva lógica. Y segundo, voy a traer en la próxima, no sé, en la próxima reunión, en 15 días voy a traer una propuesta por escrito a las autoridades a la mesa, una propuesta, alguien me va a ayudar a traducir, para cómo entendemos este proceso del, del foro. Y gracias por la invitación, voy a estar presente y al tanto de todo este proceso. Gracias.
Thank you for the invitation. Want to make two points that he had, and one is that the Multicultural Action Committee might want to change their name to Intercultural, so it's about building relationships. And then the second point that he has is that in about 15 days, he's going to bring a written proposal on the social forum. And he'll bring that to you, so that you have a written proposal. He's going to get some help with the translation of that. Thank you.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My, I hear Spanish better than I speak Spanish, so.
Want me to help?
So I'm just going to speak in English.
Okay.
And I, go ahead. So, and I agree with what Councilmember Bagley says. My, my children are both biracial. So, but when we do this, and I didn't say if, I said when we do this. It needs, and as you said, it needs to be open to all minorities and other, I guess, other interested parties. Regardless of political philosophy. Because if, what happens is, is you have, and I have felt this, you have people, where you're trying to help, but you're not of the, a political, a mentality that they like, but you can still bring perspective. And those of us that, you know, well, I grew up in Texas and have seen what Longmont has gone through in the 80s, but in the 70s. So I have a real good perspective about being excluded and waiting for people to, well, like what you're doing today, coming to ask for a forum, which it actually should already occur. So thank you for coming.
Gracias. ¿Todo retirando? Está bien?
No, no.
Thank you.
I, I don't have a question or dialogue, I just like to make an observation that, you know, I can look out in this audience, and there's probably a dozen people out there that I recognize that worked hard during this election to get the vote out. So, you know, it's just a sad state of affairs where in these midterm elections nationwide, only 30% of the people that are qualified to vote, are registered to vote, actually get out and vote. So, you know, if you really want to make a change, you just need to make sure that you work, we all work to get the vote out. I don't care if you're Republican or Democrat, but we all need to do a much better job in this nation of voting. And that's how you're going to get represented, is by getting to the polls and voting. So the next up is Sandra Stewart.
I am Sandra Stewart. I live at 1211 Twin Peaks Circle. Mayor Coombs and city council members, thank you for letting me speak this evening. In 2006, Longmont set a team to Anaheim, California, to participate in All-America City competition. I was one of several selected to represent Longmont on this team because of the work I do at the IR Center with homeless. After a presentation in Anaheim, we were selected as an All-America City. And I realized that none of you were on the city council at that time, but the majority of you were living here in Longmont. Longmont has always taken pride in being a community that addresses our needs and acts upon them. We have a can-do community. Today, however, I feel that we have neglected a significant group of people in our community with their housing needs. I speak about the working poor. As you know, our rental vacancy in Longmont is less than 3%, and rent is very high. For the working poor who make less than $12 an hour, there is little rental available. These low-income wage earners do all the retail and service work and are, that are necessary to keep our community running. They are the cashiers and the stalkers at the grocery stores and at Walmarts, they work in our gas stations at 7-Eleven. There are CNAs in our nursing homes, care centers, and hospitals. There are paras in our schools. There are custodians, they answer the phones at the call center at IBM, and they work on the production line at Celestial Seasoning and in manufacturing, and even for the city of Longmont. They work in our fast food chains. And if they are single, they really struggle to make ends meet without some kind of assistance. They are young, they're middle-aged, and they're older workers. Some of them are in their first jobs, others are trying to adapt to lost jobs and find a new career that pays a whole lot less than what they're accustomed to. They are in good health, they're in poor health. And what they all have in common is, they're employed and trying to find a place to live. In 2012 and 13, I served on the All-City Workforce Housing Task Force Committee. And we made our recommendations to the city council in May of 2013. And I spoke at that time at the city council meeting about the working poor needing affordable housing. And I have yet to see the city council move forward to help in any way to provide for more affordable housing for the working poor. Last year in 2014, I interviewed over 76 individuals at the IR Center's starting place, who all worked full-time, but could not afford to find an affordable place to rent. I'm sorry to say that the IR Center could only help a small number of those people because of the lack of affordable rental stock available here in Longmont. In the draft of the current Boulder-Broomfield County Consortium of Consolidated Plans for 2015 to 2019, it states that Longmont is down 3,000, over 3,000 rental units, and their plan proposes to increase the stock by only 60 affordable rental units in the next five years. The need is great, our working poor deserve our commitment and our action. It will take your political will to help them find affordable homes. And then we can continue to be an All-America City that I truly believe we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we please applaud? Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. You can't applaud, but you can say whatever you want. I want to thank you for coming to talk about this. I, I met with one of your fellow task force members just this last week to talk about this very thing, because it bothers me a great deal. I think what, there are several things, he had some great ideas, there's several of them I'm going to ask my fellow council members to, to act upon. One is to ask the city to pass some kind of tax, to go to a dedicated fund for affordable housing. I never agreed with putting affordable housing just on the backs of one, the developers, but I do think that it is a community problem and we all need to pay for it. Also, we need to look at perhaps all, some of the land that the city owns. See if there's some land there that we can give to someone for affordable housing that'll help them, you know, get over that hump to make it worth their while to develop that land for affordable housing. So I, it's not been forgotten, the work that you've done has not been forgotten. We're, we're just trying to do it in the best way possible, and hopefully we'll do it soon.
Thank you. I hope so. Thank you.
Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So I, I happen to sit on the, the Longmont Housing Authority as council liaison. We had a big discussion about that, actually, this morning, is how do we move this ball forward? Their, their issues are that financing is a problem for them right now, so it doesn't look like it's going to get any better soon, and that's probably our primary source of low-income housing. I did happen to meet with a couple of developers, along with the city manager, to say, okay, how do we do this? What's it going to take to involve the private sector? And I think we have some ideas coming out on that, so we have a big problem. But it's not just affordable housing, it's all housing. And so I think we need to focus on housing as a big issue, with affordable being some of the more urgent issue. And in order to get that going, we need to open the conversation up. And I know, do know that, that there will be information coming to council on what, what the short-term need is, probably by the end of February, so there is actually being taken, and I'm definitely interested in solving this problem, so thank you for coming.
Thank you. You'll probably hear from me again. Thank you. Well, last week, we voted 5 to 2 to change some zoning so some more affordable housing could get. Thank you. All right, the next up is Linda Clayce.
Good evening, gentlemen, and Mayor Coombs and council members, ladies. Thank you so much for hearing us tonight. My name is Linda Clayce, and I reside at 2716 Mountain View Avenue. I'm here tonight to specifically ask this council to direct the city staff to develop a sustainability and climate action plan for immediate adoption by Longmont. Implementing a sustainability plan is simply nothing less than upholding the resolution and ordinances that have already been adopted by the city council and that most citizens of Longmont assume are being implemented. In 2008, the city council adopted Resolution R 2008-25, implementing strategies contained in the Boulder County Sustainable Energy Plan. Resolution R-2008-98, declaring Longmont a zero-waste community and encouraging the pursuit of zero waste. And Resolution R-2008-99, supporting the strategies of the Colorado Climate Action Plan. In each of these resolutions, the city states that it either desires or has positioned itself as an environmental leader. If that is indeed the case, then why is there no mention of Longmont when Denver, Fort Collins, Boulder, Aspen, Glenwood Springs, and Carbondale are receiving accolades for their climate action plans, thriving with entrepreneurial activity, and gaining new jobs because of their commitment and implementation of a climate action plan? In 2009, the city began an integrated sustainability plan based on the award and requirements of a Department of Energy grant. Two years, an attempt, two years later, an attempt was made by city staff to present this plan to council on October 18th, 2011. The presentation was interrupted by Councilwoman Katie Witt, and the presentation was postponed with a motion seconded by Gabe Santos. An exhaustive search in the public documents portals produced no evidence that the presentation was ever made. Considering that the city of Longmont received Department of Energy grant funds for the development of an energy efficiency and conservation strategy that was being developed as part of the Integrated Sustainability Plan, and the city staff has no doubt spent countless hours and taxpayer money developing this plan, which is clearly important to the cities of Longmont. Why has the city council not allowed the presentation of the Integrated Sustainability Plan so that it can be adopted as a resolution or an ordinance? In 2013, a recommendation was made as part of Ordinance 0, oh, 2013-24 for an annual report that provides baseline information for the measurements identified in each chapter of the comprehensive plan, along with any available trend data and correlations among key related indicators. Where is the indicators and benchmark reports referenced in Ordinance 02013-24, updating the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan, including amendments regarding community health and wellness? Many of those indicators come from the Quality of Life Survey, which occurred 14 times from 1996 to 2010, but it has not been taken since 2010. Who do the stakeholders contact when they want to know how the city of Longmont is meeting its sustainability goals? How is Longmont participating in the Platte River Power Authority's carbon reduction plan? And why has Longmont not passed the EPA standards since 2007? Clear roadmaps for adopting sustainability and climate action plans have already been laid out by cities across the US and Colorado. With the availability of assistance from organizations such as the Rockefeller Foundation, Star Communities Network, Sustainability Cities Institute, Rocky Mountain Institute, and US Green Building Council, and others, it is a simple, reasonable, and straightforward proposition to implement a sustainability and climate action plan here in Longmont before the end of 2015. I implore each of you to take a stand to commit to doing so, for the health of our residents, for our economic vitality, and for the future success of this great city. Thank you.
Well, I'll address one thing. I sit on the Platte River Power Board, and since I've been on that board, it's basically, Platte River Power is the organization that has, that basically generates the power for four cities, Loveland, Estes Park, Longmont, and Fort Collins. And since I've been on the board, we've pushed hard, we've added 60 megawatts of wind out in the northeast corner. We're up for bid right now on 10 megawatts of solar. Right now, our energy portfolio is getting more and more diversified. We're up to like 30% renewables. I don't know what else. We've pushed as hard and fast as we can to make Platte River a better, robust source of energy and have more renewables, and I'm really proud of, you know, my efforts on that plan. So, you know, to say that we're not doing anything, I think is not correct, because we are doing as much as we possibly can. And we want to do a lot more. You know, one of the problems that we have with, you know, our baseline source is a coal plant, which you can't vary up and down a lot, the place to operate is city-state. So what ultimately we're going to need is an intermediate source, like a combined-cycle gas plant, that you can vary instantaneously up and down, so that when the wind stops blowing and the sun stops shining, you can, that would allow us to integrate a lot more renewables. And we want to integrate, you know, have a, an intermediate source like that, not because we want to burn gas for electricity, but because we want to burn, because we want to have more renewables into our portfolio. And it's the only technology that's viable right now until the battery storage problem is, is solved economically. So I, I'm really proud of what Longmont's position, not only myself, but our director of LPC, Tom Rainy Otis, has been a very strong advocate of. And there's also been many, many programs for energy reduction in businesses, which we participated. You know, my personal business has taken advantage of these. We've gotten, you know, new lighting, new motors on all of our refrigeration equipment. They've come in, you know, the Boulder County Sustainability and Longmont have worked together to provide all kinds of information and plans and options to, for homeowners to participate in, so. And as far as promoting health and wellness, I've always been an ambassador for health and wellness in this city. Yeah, so, but anyway, I'm going to let the other people weigh in. Councilmember Levinson.
Um, I too am disappointed that we never really examined the sustainability plan that staff brought forward, but at that point on council with the makeup we had on council, there was really not an interest to do that, plain and simple. And, um, just to let you know and the public know that, um, I'm actually, um, going to spend, uh, two days extra in Washington, D.C. at the beginning of March, uh, as part of a convening of municipalities across the United States and the French government being hosted by the French Embassy to talk about, uh, climate change and sustainability at the municipal level as well as community resiliency. And, um, I'm hoping that, um, to present some information about what we're doing to make our community more resilient, especially in light of that historic flood we had in twenty-fif- twenty thirteen. And then, um, as a a follow-up, I'm not sure whether or not, um, there will be additional opportunities to collaborate with, um, you know, cities in France if the the French are really making an effort to have it become a learning community, uh, between the U.S. and, uh, uh, French cities. But we'll explore those options when we get there. But, um, that's what I'll be doing for two days in Washington, D.C. So I'm I'm already on it for you.
And I also forgot to mention that I believe in late February, we'll bring in curbside recycling, um, as an option, as a study, yeah, excuse me, curbside composting as an option to, uh, reduce our landfill requirement. So, you know, we we are looking to to make this a better, more sustainable community. Does anybody else would like to? Councilmember Bradley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And we did kinda take on the oil and gas industry. You should give credit for that. Just a little. And and I guess the only other thought is that, uh, everybody who I talk to about something like this, half of them, if you say, what do you think about a sustainability and climate action plan? Half of them are adamantly opposed, half of them, half of them are adamantly for. But I think that if you just got rid of the word sustainability and climate action plan and just stuck to the points, not you, I'm talking about us in general, you know, and just said, I mean, everybody wants clean air and clean water and we want, uh, you know, we wanna, uh, limit our fossil fuels and I think it's, I guess my my first response when you asked your question and you, I was gonna go, I don't know. And so, well, why I don't, I don't know. So we're making good progress, I think. But yeah, you're right, we can do more. So maybe it is time to maybe revisit it and talk about what we should do. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Parker?
Yeah. You should be discussing.
Thank you. Um, my name is Joe Parker. I live at twenty-seventy-five Riverwalk Lane in Longmont. Um, I'm really here tonight to talk about the same thing Linda talked about, but I wanna give it a little bit of different flavor and sense of, I wanna focus on the economic benefits of a sustainability plan. And I'll vary it a little bit because the first two speakers, and including Linda, have clearly demonstrated the interlocking relationship of different things in the community. And so sustainability plan would be a way to pull all those together and have, you you don't have one little silo over here working on one issue. If you go down the list of the elements of the Denver Sustainability Plan, there are twelve elements: air quality, climate, energy, food, health, housing, land use, material, mobility, water quality, water quantity, and workforce. Now, that doesn't say energy. It's one of the twelve points. And I think that's, we get a little off-center when we focus on that. In fact, there was a study that I just read about, I put it by McKinsey Consulting Group, called "The Business of Sustainability." And the focus of mo- of the major good companies in the country is on sustainability for more than just PR. It's it's also to save money by reducing energy. Fort Collins has a goal to reduce their energy consumption thirty-one percent. What happens if they, energy consumption goes down, the cost of doing business and the cost of living in Fort Collins goes down? We're competing with the same companies, similar companies. So they say, Fort Collins, geez, thirty-one percent less than energy cost, usage cost. Maybe I'll go to Fort Collins. Denver just had a major company come in, Panasonic. One of the, one of the key issues that caused them to come and accept a movement to Den- move to Denver was their sustainability plan, which is a position and active in the whole government of Denver. Similar situation is going on in Fort Collins. We're doing some things, but it's a little bit over here, it's a little bit over here, and there's a lack of integration and a sustainability plan would would be the issue that would would be the thing that could pull it all together and see that you're you're not getting out of whack on one area or the other. And it's something we can promote and becomes our brand for getting businesses here and jobs. Invite companies to come here, they can't find living accommodations for all their employees, whether they're hourly employees or executives. They look at it and say, why are we gonna do that? If it's an environment that the kid, that the employees don't wanna move to, younger employees today are very concerned about sustainability in the broad sense of the word. So that's all part of selling Longmont, to bring companies in, bring families in that live here. Thank you very much. I hope you will consider putting us in the forefront of this issue and bringing a plan together for Longmont.
I'd like to comment that, uh, you really understand, financial sustainability, that's the starting point because people do things for financial reasons. And and that's why, you know, people try to make their houses more efficient and their companies more efficient and, uh, basically, though, all four cities that are in Platte River Power will still pay the same wholesale cost for energy. So, I mean, it's great that Fort Collins does a whole bunch and I hope we follow their lead and we do just as much, but in the end, Fort Collins and Longmont pay the same amount for energy at the wholesale level. Um, so I I just don't quite follow your analogy.
Well, because, in fact, what they're gonna do is reduce their usage. It's kind of a concept of negative watts. If you don't buy it, if you don't need it, then you save money for your citizens and you save money for the companies that are there. And so they have a major program to reduce consumption. No, it won't change the rate. Matter of fact, if they, if they got to a hundred percent, what would that do to the minimum power you're operating cost of, uh, Platte River Power? I mean, if they didn't buy any power, I mean, that's what they would like to do by twenty-fifty. I think that's a pretty ambitious goal, but...
Well, if they're on the grid, their power per kilowatt's gonna have to go up.
Platte River would.
Yeah. No, I mean, for the amount of energy that they are gonna use, it has to go up if their energy goes down to zero and they still have to be on the grid to have power for those days that the sun's not shining and the wind's not blowing. That energy's gonna be pretty expensive energy, even though they're using a very small amount.
There's a significant body of evidence that suggests that technically by two thousand and fifty, it's totally feasible. And, I mean, I don't, I'm not technically qualified to 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 evaluate that. I'm just saying, suppose it happens. It could happen. The price of the cost of solar has dropped by ninety percent in the last three years. What if it happens? What if battery technology goes down?
That's great. Let's get on board. I mean, as soon as it's technically feasible, we're gonna be ahead of the power curve. We've always, Longmont's always been on the cutting edge.
That's where, that's where we wanna be and we'll get there if we have a fully sustainable, integrated plan that pulls together all the pieces. I really believe that it's the best way to go and we have plenty of models that suggest it's, it works. So let's do it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, yeah. Let me think about that while I, how about Jim Kin- Kinsworthi?
James Kinworth, one oh seven Caribou Place. My name does not have an S in it.
Sorry.
Okay. There's so many issues, but I'd like to say something about getting out the vote. If you wanna get out the vote, give the people something to vote for. I've been voting ever since I was twenty-one years old and that's quite a long time ago. And for the past, I don't know how many years, I've been voting against and not voting for. And a good example is this wishy-washy business between Gerald Polis and the mayor, or the governor, sorry. There was a lot of finagling over nothing and the Democrats got blasted for it and they deserved it. They deserved what they got. And I am not a Republican. But I'm here to talk about sustainability and I realize that, uh, labels are a problem, but if you don't wanna call it sustainability, what do you wanna call it? And if you don't wanna call it the climate action plan, what do you wanna call it? You have to call it something. And everybody has to know what you're talking about. And I realize this is new, but we had a sustainability coordinator a few years ago and it wasn't this city council. The the city sandbagged that guy, it wouldn't let him do any work, and he had to leave. He left. And there's a couple of leftovers here, people that were in on that. And that was, um, what do I wanna say? Regressive? That was regressive action. So all I wanna, wanna do tonight is, uh, define the terms. What is sustainable? I went to, um, my computer, pulled up my dictionary. This is basic stuff, nothing to argue about. Sustainability: able to be maintained at a certain rate or level. Think about human life on Earth, because that's, that is actually what we're talking about. We're talking about human life on Earth. We're gonna go over the edge if we don't change our ways. Conserving an ecological balance by avoiding depletion of natural resources. So let's look at the opposite. What's unsustainable? Not able to be maintained at the current rate or level. And again, think of human life on Earth, because that's the issue. Upsetting the ecological balance by depleting natural resources. Now, I know some of you are already bored. What is the, to me, the most obvious natural resource is breathable air. That's an obvious natural resource. If we don't have breathable air, we're all cooked. And the next one is water. That's the next basic natural resource. And to me, the thing, the thing that comes to mind when you talk about air and water is fracking. And the next natural resource is good food grown from fertile ground that has not been contaminated by chemicals. That's the three natural resources I wanna talk about. Let's see, I follow... Four interconnected domains for sustainable development: ecology, the economics, politics, and culture. We're talking about balance. I hear a lot about economics. I don't hear a lot about the environment. I hear a lot about politics and I don't hear a lot about culture. Moving towards sustainability is a social challenge and it's also a social advantage. I think Joe talked about that. I don't have to. No company or family wants to move to a city that is unhealthy to its citizens and it treats its, its citizens in a, uh, what I wanna say? Less than, uh, like second-class citizens. Even the Pope is concerned about sustainability. And I have to tell you, I've never quoted the Pope before. It is man who has slapped nature in the face. We have exploited nature too much. Thanks be to God, and I even wrote a capital G, that today there are many voices, so many speak, so many people speaking about this problem. Pope Francis, can you believe that? That's the first time the Pope has ever said anything that I thought was worthwhile. Times are changing. And if Longmont has a sustainability plan, tell me what it is. If Longmont has a goal, tell me what it is. And I'll, I can, I'll take my answers back in the backseat. I don't have to stick around here.
You know, yeah, if I've been a surplus, now it's time for any dialogue. Would anybody like to comment or?
I can't believe I've talked for five minutes already. I've never, I've never talked that long.
Yeah. Anyway, listen to the Pope.
Thank you, Jim.
Joan Gregerson?
Okay. Is it over here if I stand up? Sure. So over here? Wherever.
Just hit the button on the middle. There you go.
I'm an electrical engineer, you can tell. I was gonna start my time so I keep track here. Okay, it's not working. Okay, um, my name is Joan Gregerson. I live at ten eleven Hobers Street, Unit D. And I am very happy to be here tonight and really thankful that that, um, Longmont allows this open forum time. Um, so I am part of this group of six of us that have been working on how we can talk to you and convey our passion for this very important thing. Um, so I too hereby request that the Longmont City Council direct city staff to develop a sustainability and climate action plan with a detailed action timeline and accountability procedures. We request that the city adopt this plan in two thousand fifteen. We ask you to take a stand and commit to do this and to establish Longmont as a sustainability leader for the health of our residents, for our economic vitality, and for the future success of this great city. So it's great that the folks before me covered some very important points. Um, you know, I'm not afraid to say climate action or sustainability. And, uh, I moved to Longmont in December of last year. And when I, I thought, wow, Longmont is so cool. They passed the fracking ban. They must be very forward-thinking. Um, and I got a job offer about the first of September of, uh, this was of two thousand thirteen. Um, and everyone was asking me, where is your job? And a few days later, when the flood happened, people said, Longmont? Why are you, are you, what, what, why would you move to Longmont? And I said, it'll be fine, you know, they passed the fracking ban. These guys, they have their act together. They must really be on top of this stuff. And, uh, so I started trying to find the sustainability group that was going to be really, you know, working on climate action, because obviously, I mean, if we have wildfires and droughts and all this, uh, then certainly somebody's working on it. Well, we didn't find people that were. And in fact, when we contacted city staff members, so I I used to work at Fort Collins Utilities. At Fort Collins Utilities, we worked with the Fort Collins, the Sustainable Living Association. We... At Fort Collins Utilities, we worked with the Fort Collins, the Sustainable Living Association. We were a sponsor of Sustainable Living Association. We volunteered at their fair, so we worked hand in hand. So imagine my surprise when I'm reaching out to city staff, and they said, "Please do not use the word 'sustainability' in an email to me. People are watching." Like, what? What is this? So for, for city staff people, not just one, but several, to be afraid to use the word "sustainability", which Jim defined, it means not screwing it up so bad that our kids can live here. I mean, this is the craziest thing that we could possibly argue about. So sustainability, get over it. It's, we love sustainability. Sustainable, if we don't love it, we're misunderstood. And I would also like to say that climate action and climate change should also be very well-understood. Uh, we have a speaker coming up. So I'm the founder of Sustainable Revolution Longmont. Revolution because we couldn't find anybody to work with. So it's like, well, what the heck? I guess we gotta have a revolution. So, um, February 18th, we have a speaker coming, Professor Scott Denning from, uh, CSU, who teaches about climate change. On his bio, it says he enjoys speaking to hostile audiences, so if you know anybody, guess you'd like that. You can come, February 18th, if you want. Um, but he says it's very simple. There's three words. Simple, serious, and solvable. So simple... Climate change is simple. You need to know these next two sentences. You need to teach these next two sentences to your kid and every single staff member. Burning fossil fuels releases carbon dioxide. Carbon dioxide acts as a heat-trapping blanket which inevitably raises the temperature of the Earth. Okay, so imagine I'm the Earth. Okay, heat-trapping blanket. So the first layer goes on, and you're like, oh, man, it's freezing out there. Actually, this would be nice if we warmed up a little. I wouldn't have to shovel so much. It'd be great. So, but then there's, there's the next blanket. And then suddenly, you know, it's like, well, not so convenient. One more. So this is as we keep... As we keep adding layers and we keep burning fossil fuels, this is what we're saying. So I don't know what climate change denier is. This is simple. This is common sense. And I hope that you will implement a climate action plan for all of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
If anyone's cold, you can strip away.
I guess I'll go on record. I've never had a problem with the word "sustainability."
Councilmember Bagley?
Neither do I. I wasn't saying get rid of the word. I was just saying, when you talk to people, I mean, the whole reason why you're saying what you're saying is because there are people out there that would argue with you. So I was just pointing out a, 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 a fact.
I agree.
That's it. But, uh, do you know Danny?
I love Danny. Danny and I were just walking around the fairgrounds, planning the Youth of the Earth Festival. She is our...
That's my daughter.
I know.
All right.
I know. I didn't bring that up, but we love Danny.
So here's the, um... So she makes me look good on nights like tonight.
She makes us all look good, actually.
So my question, so let me just ask a couple hard questions, and then my fellow council members can either yell at me or hug me later. One, as a council, do we want to do this? And here's my concern. Okay? My concern would be, Harold, and right now your guts probably twisted, because I don't remember the name of the city staffer who came to my office, and was basically tasked to create a sustainability... Say again?
Cal Youngberg.
No, it wasn't Cal.
You mean previous?
No, no, no. The, so...
Ron Chau.
Who? No, no, no. No, no. I'm thinking of, um, there was a, there was a woman in city staff who, when we, there was a... Was it Erin? Yeah, Erin. Uh, she wrote all the sustainability stuff into the city plan that we gutted. Well, yeah. Who was it?
Yeah.
Erin, right? Yeah, yeah. So my question is, um, what would her and staff's reaction be if we would actually try to tackle this again? Are you thinking, "Oh, golly, what a headache"? Is it possible? It's possible, okay? Because I, I mean, I don't think we need to argue about what words we use. If we just put a plan in place, then, I mean, everybody wins, right?
Yeah.
Technically?
Right, and we actually have, we have two more speakers who might be able to help answer a couple of those questions for what, what you would need to do.
I will wait to, to do anything so that it looks like I'm convinced.
Well, I mean, unless you want to go ahead and just do it now.
I was going to ask, I mean, I mean, do we want to just do that?
Yeah, sure. I mean, that's, that's a great question. Yeah.
So anyway, I direct staff tonight. So that's, that is the question. And I would be, I would be for directing staff to do this and beginning the, but we would probably need to do it quick because elections are coming up in November and I would just like it...
That would be okay with us.
I would just like it addressed seriously and done.
Yeah, exactly. That's our point, too. There's tons of climate action plans out there.
Councilmember Lovison?
Well, you know, uh, when we first, uh, saw the sustainability plan for the city, uh, back in, uh, 2010, or actually, we saw parts of it coming in '09 as well, we had some really good information in it, and it was very thoughtfully done. It had a lot of community input. So I suggest that we, uh, bring that document back off the shelf, dust it off, and then see what we can do to, um, update it and get some new information, because obviously, a lot has happened in five years. Or, yeah, five years, almost six now. And we have a work plan. Council directs our work plan. We can put this on our work plan. You know, we can, we can ask staff to look into it tonight. We don't, that's not necessarily a formal action, but next week, we have a regular session. So we could actually direct them at the regular session next week to start working on this, or we can, um, initiate it ourselves, put it on our work plan if we agree to do that as a council, so... You know, I don't, I don't think sustainability is a bad word. I'd like to hear from the other two speakers to hear what else they have to add, and I'm glad you're coming tonight. And I'm glad to see the visuals, because the visuals will probably make the paper up each tomorrow.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, you know, as Councilmember Lovison said, there is a plan. And if I recall, Ron did go through part of his present, a good portion of his presentation back in 2010. Yes, it was shelved. As Councilmember Bagley said, there are people who, like yourselves, are very passionate about this, and there are, there are folks in the community that aren't very passionate about it. So it's trying to convince those others, which can be trying at times, to see that there's use in, in what you're, in everything that you're proposing, in the, in the previous speakers. So yes, we do have a plan. It's not a bad idea just to dust it off, bring it before council. Let us at least, the new members of council, look at it, because they have not seen it. And go over it, and then see about revising it.
We, we would love to share some ideas about that. I, I know that, um, Fort Collins, for example, they spent, I believe, $50,000 on their stepping-up research to see what, what, um, feasible goals would be. I believe that Rocky Mountain Institute donors donated twice that amount. So there's, there's so many people out there that really want to help cities do this, that once you make the commitment, there are a lot of folks and dollars and partners out there that would love to, um, contribute resources to the city. So we thank you. I, I want to say one last thing. We were, I was at Lucky's Market doing outreach last week, and we were telling people what we do, and we said, you know, one of the things is we're making a call for a climate action plan. Every single person I said that to said, "What do you mean? We don't have one?" And I said, "Well, no. Why don't we? Well, how is that possible?" So I think things maybe have changed, so that doing this in 2015 is going to be a different, a different set for you. So thank you very much. I really appreciate this forum.
Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Joan, and thank everybody who's been speaking on this. I think if, as Councilwoman Bagley said, we get over the words and just go for the, the actual inspiration, which is sustainability, sustainability is a very old word. It's not something new. People just get... Some people get bent out of shape about it, but that's exactly what every human being wants to do, is sustain themselves. And as a city, that's what we need to do, is be able to build and maintain something that will last and endure in the future. And we're working on the Longmont Comprehensive Plan. And I think that this is a very good, uh, time for us to examine, um, taking the sustainability, uh, objectives and goals and, uh, folding them into our thinking about, uh, how we're going to work toward the comprehensive plan. Thanks.
Councilmember Lovison?
One other course of action that we can do is the Board of Environmental Affairs is a citizen advisory board, but they can't do anything unless we ask them to look into something. So I'm going to propose next week at our regular session that, um, we, uh, direct the Board of Environmental Affairs to start taking this up, too, because they are our citizen advisory board, and I would also suggest, uh, those of you that want to work on this issue, to start attending those meetings, and I believe Councilmember Christiansen is our liaison and can tell you when they meet.
Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, I, I would agree that sustainability is not a bad word. Uh, I've worked at an aluminum rolling plant. It was natural gas and energy consumption, and their motivations might have been slightly different, but we had environmental requirements we had to meet. We exceeded them all the time because we felt it was important to be a good neighbor in the community. And their sustainability, the sustainability plan I helped them formulate, we actually reduced energy consumption on furnaces by 30%. It was a couple million dollars a year in cost, and, uh, we improved our waste treatment so that we were basically putting out pure water, better than the city was providing us. So I, I think that it just makes sense. If a business wants to do it, why wouldn't it see? And I think it's, you know, it's, it's time to do it.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Okay. Anyway, the Board of Environmental Affairs meets tomorrow at 3 o'clock over at the Department of Public Works. And I also would suggest that, uh, that board needs to be unleashed so that they are not the only board in the city that's required to, uh, come hand and foot to city council for permission to be a board. Anyway, that can all be taken care of next week. Thanks.
And I guess I'd like to close it. Just because we don't, haven't had a sustainability plan doesn't mean that we haven't been working towards doing sustainable efforts. I mean, myself personally, I've had several meetings about, uh, curbside composting. I, I sit on the Flat River Power Board, uh, where we address sustainability issues all the time. I meet with Tom. We talk about it all the time, you know, LED lighting. I've been pushing for sustainability, you know, myself. You know, I drive very fuel-efficient cars or ride my bike a lot. I don't know, you know, just my personal habits, uh... You know, I just don't generate trash to speak of. So, but just, just because we don't have a sustainability plan does not mean that some of us or all of us aren't working on sustainability, and it's not, it is important. I think to everybody on council. So I, I think before we go on, I'd like to ask, is there any high school kids that, uh, you know, under 18 that are signed up here that would like to maybe move in the front of the line to get home to do homework? Is there anybody in that category? I usually hate to move people ahead of line, but is there any? Okay. Now I'll just continue in order. Bill Weber?
Hello? Mayor Coombs, council. Very nice to see you this evening. I'm here on a bit of a lighter note now that you've made some good decisions on our behalf, and we really appreciate that.
And what is your address for the record?
Oh, excuse me. I live at 600 Clotman Street. Right across from your business, there at Bell's Place. And I'm, uh, on the little, on the little letter note side of it, I was very supportive of, I'm a contrarian where I live and, and a bit like Sarah. But I was very... I know. That's all right. Somehow I, I function and, uh... But anyway, I was very pleased a week ago to see, uh, the comments of, um, your partner there, Mr. Bagley, who was very complimentary toward you. Said he loved you and said that, uh... And so that was... Because I know that you're both at odds on many issues. And so that was, uh, an interesting thing to see, and, uh, I like that. That is nice. And it's obvious that all of you long well on this comment from someone earlier this evening about when I came to, "How do these people get along with each other?" And I said, "Well, I think they get along pretty well, apparently, because, uh, they meet frequently. They seem to have, uh, good, uh, homogeneous, uh, viewpoints on things, and even though they, they disagree, they disagree agreeably, uh, and get together to solve issues." And, um, I know, um, Mayor Coombs, I've seen you in action, uh, a number of times, riding your bike. And, uh, so I know that you, what you say is true, that, that you're very involved with, uh, the sustainability effort, and however you call it or phrase it, but, uh... So that's a good thing. And Mr. Santos, uh, I've observed you as well, and, uh, I know that you're very much involved in, in these issues. And my, my thing was just, uh, on the solar side of it, I've done some study of, of that and solar technology, and, uh, I know that, uh, there are many new, um, you know, active solar devices out there, inverters, that help convert, um, immediately convert solar energy, um, uh, directly. And, uh, in the solar panels, solar roofs, like solar roof, like Sonus Building. So I know that the council, uh, excuse me, that the city of Longmont is very much involved with that and interested in it. And so those are all really good things. And I don't really have that much more to add, but I'm, I'm just interested in, in seeing this group get along well, see the city, um, cooperate with the interests of the citizens, and, uh, all of us work together to, uh, try and make this a better place. So I thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, I, I really like this Mr. Weber guy.
Me too.
Does anyone else want to come down and share more things like Mr. Weber? Can we just move them to the front?
I like you too, Brian. Thank you.
Peter Jacobs?
Thank you very much. My name is Pete Jacobs. I live at 1601 Great Western Drive. And I just want to thank you for the, um, discussion we've had today and, um, and for your commitment. I mean, we came down to ask for a commitment, and we got it. And I'll be brief, because there's a whole room full of people, and I'm sure there's other topics that would like to be addressed. I just want to make a couple of points that you might be interested in. There was some canvassing that was done in all three wards of Longmont by a group called Communities for Sustainable Energy nominally to talk about the solar farm. However, they did include a question in their canvassing about climate action plan and got some results back from that. 72% of the people they spoke with said they were in favor. 4% said they were not in favor, and 23% said they weren't sure. So, you know, roughly three-quarters of the people that responded to their, their question were in favor of, of a, um, climate action plan by that name. So... Just a couple of issues. I know there, there's been some discussion about the availability of a plan that's, that, has been set aside for a while and, um, and restoring that. I know there's several people in our group that, um, have some experience... I know there's several people in our group that have some experience looking at plans. If that plan could be made available, that would be great. We'd love to, you know, provide some comment and maybe have some help moving that along. And just also wanted to thank you for your support of the energy efficiency in the city with the performance contracting work that you've done and your nice display out there showing us how much energy we're saving, and also for your consideration of the curbside composting. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone, oh, excuse me, Joan Peck?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and councilmembers. First of all, I would like to thank you for being open to the sustainable revolution and the plan. But I would like to ask you to consider when you dust off that old plan to include the sustainable revolution as a task force and not just have it be staff or council that makes that decision, but you actually take their intelligent knowledge and incorporate it and let them be part of the plan. I think that would be a great way to work with the city, with the residents. But that's not why I came here to speak about it. So years ago, there were developers who wanted to put a barbecue restaurant, a laundromat, and a gas station on Hoover Street where Rogers Grove is. Many people went before council from all over the city, and they appealed, voicing the reasons why this would be a really bad idea and a misuse of our natural resource, which is the St. Crane Greenway. Council listened, and from the Rogers family's generosity and reclamation of the ponds, we have Rogers Grove and Golden Ponds, which expanded in the St. Crane Greenway. That was a collaborative effort between residents and developers and council. Later, a group of doctors purchased a horse pasture off of Sunset Street to develop. Their plan was to put cement pads on the property with electrical outlets on poles. The pads would then be leased or sold with no regard as to how the purchaser developed that concrete pad. Again, people went before council and appealed with various reasons in facts as to why this wasn't a good development. The mayor listened, sent the plans back to planning and zoning, and after several revisions, a decent development occurred. The mayor and council were accessible in both cases, the process transparent, and it worked. You want to change that. Why? Let's talk about Union Reservoir now. About 10 years ago, developers wanted to develop around our public reservoir, creating a Christian community incorporating our reservoir into their plans. The residents spoke up loudly, and the church withdrew the plans. When I brought up my concerns to Councilman Bagley about that reservoir, if these code changes to appeal a development were enacted, how would that affect the reservoir? And his response to me was, but it isn't Joan Peck's reservoir. And I thought about that, yup, I thought about that statement. Actually, it is my reservoir. And it belongs to, that reservoir belongs to everybody in this room. It belongs to everybody who is watching on Channel 8. But it does, it is not a reservoir that belongs to churches or developers. The same goes for the St. Crane Creek with the development of the St. Crane River Corridor. That is a natural resource that belongs to the community. We maintain both through taxes, expand them through taxes, et cetera. They are ours. Anyone residing in the city, anyone, should have a voice to appeal a development involving our resources. You want to change the repeal process to exclude those voices. We're a democratic republic. Our government was set up to include our voices, not exclude them. According to Councilman Moore, you are not excluding us from the appeal process. You're just making it more difficult. So the question is, why do you want to do this? The process works the way it is. Whose idea is it or was it to change or amend the developmental and land use codes? Is it because, as was stated, it's no one's business was developed on the other side of town? Referencing amendments to the code, that you have to prove the development directly affects you? You live within the 750-foot perimeter or planning and zoning made an error? Then the appeal only has merit if the city attorney says it does. The developmental projects that I just referenced, not all of the people who spoke lived within the 750 feet of those projects. On small developments, for example, in your neighborhood, no one except the developer or someone from staff may appeal a development. Is it to eliminate, or Councilman Santos refers to as frivolous appeals? No appeal is frivolous to the one appealing. Eliminating our right to appeal may shorten council meetings and the amount of material to read before meetings. Or is there a more nefarious reason behind the code changes? Perhaps to take the city down a path that council knows the residents won't accept? Again, why are you doing this? Who or what precipitated this action to amend the ability for residents to appeal a development? Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I apologize for interrupting. But that's not true, Ms. Peck.
Absolutely, it is.
This is the third time that you've come before council and we'll have conversations, and then you will misrepresent things I say. It is. And so, so let me, let me be clear. It is all of our reservoir. I didn't say it's not your reservoir. What I specifically said was, because it's all of our reservoir, it's not fair that Joan Peck supersedes and hijacks the process. That is what I said. So, but let's be clear, okay? In each of your examples, I want to be perfectly clear. Harold, putting you on the spot. Eugene, you're up there together, okay? So, under the...
[inaudible]
Yeah, that's right. Don't touch the doorknob. So number one, so there were examples about the barbecue and gas station on Hoover. So my question is, the ordinance that we're talking about right now, would the public still be able to participate in the process that would have resulted in the exact same Or ending, so to speak? Joanie? Answer is yes. Okay? So the process, so the process that we're dealing with, and the same question for the doctor's development and Union Reservoir. Would the result have been the same? So, in short, what you just said was, the current process that planning and zoning uses, no one's changing it. There is still a public hearing at planning and zoning? There is still contact with your city councilmen? There is still, there is still your public invited to be heard? All of the processes that existed during all three examples continue exist today?
I'm talking about the appeal process.
Now, the only difference is, what we are talking about, the only issue before council is a matter called standing. In law, if you are going to file an appeal or file a lawsuit, you have to have standing. Now, my understanding is, please correct me if I'm wrong, because if I'm voting and my understanding's wrong, you need to correct me, Mr. May, city attorney. But my understanding is, right now, if city, if the planning and zoning says yes or no, those with standing can appeal it to council, and therefore, if they don't agree with city council, they can go on to district court.
So explain to me, who would be in standing?
So, number one, somebody, for example, who owns the property. Number two, a developer. Number three, those who are in immediate vicinity, 750 feet, and those, anybody, who basically gives notice to the city that I'm engaged in the process and I want to have standing. Meaning, I'm going to be involved. All we're trying to avoid, at least I'm going to vote this way, because what I'm trying to avoid, is those people who do not engage in the process. And Ms. Peck, I can tell you right now, you always engage in the process.
Is that it?
Yes, you do. We're trying, I personally don't think it's good public policy for anyone to just show up without having been involved and say, you know what? I don't like that. I'm going to cause a problem. You need to be involved in the political process. You need to know your facts. You need to have participated. That's it. That's it.
If a development occurs that changes the vision or the look of the city, is not anyone who is a citizen or a resident of that city automatically involved in the process of the vision of the city? And I would like to hear if there are any other council members who interpret this the same way that Councilman Bagley does.
And, and I'll shut up, I'll hit the button.
Okay.
The definition of, my understanding is, all you have to do is tell the city, hey, I don't live within the 750 feet. I am not a developer, and I don't own any property there, but I want to be involved. That's all you have to do, and you have the right to appeal. That's it.
Why is it being changed?
Yeah, why is it being changed? It's always been that way, so what's the point of changing it?
Eugene? Oh, you laugh.
Mayor and council, Eugene May, city attorney. I made the same sort of comments a couple weeks ago in the appeals, councils acting in quasi-judicial capacity. And in that capacity, we borrowed elements from the judicial process. Not anybody can bring a lawsuit. You need to have skin in the game. And by analogy, when you come in front of council, you need to have skin in the game. And these are land use matters, and the land use code already determines through its notice distances, who are those people impacted by this development. And that is the proposal that staff is making to council, that those are the ones who are affected by that land use matter, and those are the people who have standing. Injury, in fact, it's a bedrock principle of constitutional law. And we are adding, anybody can raise their hand and get in the process. These are principles borrowed from administrative law. You can't just ignore the process, come in at the end, and raise your hand and say, I want to appeal. He must have been involved, submitted comments, participated in the process. A lot of what you said, Councilmember Bagley.
That doesn't answer the question.
Why are you changing it, then? Why are we amending those codes if this has always been the process?
Just because it's been that way doesn't mean it's the right way. Staff put a lot of time looking at improving the code, making it more readable, user-friendly, so people can read it, as well as streamlining the text, so it's not 120 pages. It's 70 pages.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So Eugene, while you're here, so I would, we've had a lot of emails about this issue, and I definitely wanted to understand it for sure. But I read to the ordinance tonight, on page eight, line 23, under notice, others who have failed timely written request to receive notice. So that would make them noticeable. Is that correct? Page eight, line 23, others who have failed, filed timely written notice to receive notice.
Others who have filed notice to receive notice. Those would fall into those that can appeal.
Okay. And so under appeal, then on line, on page 12, line two, any person or organization entitled under this chapter to written notice can appeal.
Right. So they requested notice, and so they are those that are entitled to notice.
So that comes to the bigger ish, I think one of the things that we need to understand is that I myself have found it hard, difficult to find the spreadsheet where they keep track of all the, all the development processes that are underway in the city. We were going, Joanie was going to try to put that on, on the, an easier place to find on the website. I was just wondering if we need to make sure that we have a way that people can find, easily find, how do you file an appeal? And have that as an accessible link on the website as well. And that way, at least, if they have, if we put, do two things. Number one, put the development spreadsheet, the current developments underway spreadsheet into the council information packet. And number two, make it easy to find out how to appeal if you want to. We can address some of these concerns of making it more difficult. And so, I mean, I would suggest we try to go down that path, so make sure that we're open and transparent as we can be, and make sure that people that really have a definite standing in this, that are maybe outside of that 750 feet, have the opportunity to understand the process, how you want it step by step, and how do you get it done, and make sure that everything's above, you know, in, everybody that wants to be in can be in. You know, I want to find out that there was one change that we needed to decode that actually makes things more transparent. It used to be in the code, they only noticed the property owners, and now we're noticing the property owners and the renters. So, I mean, our intention is to make it as transparent as possible. Councilmember Robinson?
I'm the only person on council, I can say this with confidence, who has appealed to decisions of planning and zoning to city council. I won one, I lost one. And I have to tell you that it takes a heck of a lot of work to prepare an appeal if it's going to be one that you think could be winnable. And I don't remember exactly, because it's been a while, how active I was prior to stuff getting to planning and zoning. I know in one instance, because it involved a neighborhood issue, there was a lot of collaboration. Because I was neighborhood leader, I was the chosen person to represent the neighborhood. In the other instance, it involved the appeal of the Walmart site on the east end of town, and, and that was my unsuccessful appeal. However, in that circumstance, you know, I don't remember. I sort of think that I sat back for a while at planning and zoning, and I don't remember if I actively spoke, but when everything came down, I, and among, I think, three others, filed appeals, all three of us, for different reasons. And yet, I had marshaled 400 pages of evidence that I presented, and I was still unsuccessful. And the other part of what has fundamentally changed here is that in the days that I did appeals, I did not have the burden of proof that I, that now has to be met, that somehow planning and zoning had overlooked something so egregious as to make the case appealable to council. The burden of proof currently, without the changes, is that the applicant must really show how their project meets all of the requirements. And I think that some of the appeal issues, and we've seen many appeals coming from neighborhoods for developments that impact their entire neighborhood and property values, for maybe 300, 400 homes. And what they're talking about is significant difference in opinion in how the comprehensive plan and the land development code are interpreted. So who's to say that applicant, who is not an attorney, who's just, you know, Joe Smith or Joel Smith, public citizen, is going to have to make the legal argument at a higher level than previously? That you have to substantially find fault with the individual thinking of planning and zoning members, where that, I think, is going to be insurmountable hurdle. I also have seen many times where people sit in the audience at planning and zoning, and they, they don't understand the process. I've seen on many occasions, a case is being heard, there'll be a ton of people in the audience, and no one signs up to speak, because they figure where they need to speak and where the decision is made is at city council. And I don't know how we change the environment enough that everybody understands that somehow you have to have a magic ball to know, you know, six months ahead of time that you need to start looking at some list. And I did query on the city's website today, the words "development application." What popped up where I would actually find information about the current list of what developments are happening was the sixth item down. So I don't think that we're being as transparent, and I did not agree with these changes.
Councilmember Johnson?
I agree with everything that Councilwoman Levinson has said. What changed, and this was not a change that was instigated by planning and zoning or the city attorney, was that a member of council asked to have dropped the one, one group that could appeal, which is anyone with standing in the state of Colorado. That is a very big difference. We've always had that right. If we didn't have that right, we would not be able to have the people who intervened for us and were very helpful in the fracking issue. I think this is, this is a very big mistake. The higher burden of proof is also an enormous, an enormous change. We can't appeal based on the fact that something has a community impact, we can only appeal based on an egregious error committed by planning and zoning. That's an enormous change. Thank you.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. That burden of proof hasn't changed really, though, has it? Eugene?
Thanks for not leaving, Marianne. The burden of proof is the same, it's just written down now, in a more easily read way.
So I think in the past, council has treated those appeals as de novo, and so the developer would be obligated to demonstrate compliance with all the criteria again. Again, borrowing from judicial and administrative processes, the appellant has the burden of proof on appeal. I think that's pretty much a universal principle in administrative law, as well as the legal, the judicial system.
So is it different than what we're doing now?
I think it would be different. The standard before was that the applicant needed to demonstrate compliance with all the criteria. Now, the appellant would need to demonstrate either no substantial evidence, basically abuse of discretion, or something outside the authority of Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, thank you. One of the ways maybe we could be more transparent would be on the website, and on those agendas for both planning and zoning, and council, when there is a development item, you could on the website have a click here to receive notice. And then if you had clicked that thing, and filled it out, so that they could send you notices about that development, you would then be, have the legal standing to appeal a decision. Wouldn't that work?
It does sound like it would work.
Yeah, that'd be easy, I think, and we could do that. And it would actually be easier than it is now.
Councilmember Levinson? Stole my thunder. That was my idea. What, what, that was my idea, my idea. And Eugene, one more, one more question. You don't have to, it's okay. Here's, actually, Jon. Okay. So, one, what if we were to do this? And I like this, because we can go back and forth. What about this? We do the click on the website, like Jeff Moore suggested. And then, and then, what if at the planning and zoning meetings, we have a sign-in sheet that basically states, please sign in, and makes it quite crystal clear that signing in provides standing? Because then you are basically able to ask for notice, you're participating, et cetera. That is my only concern. I just don't want people to come after the fact, all of a sudden don't like Walmart, they don't have the 300 to 400 pages of Sarah Levinson's argument, but nevertheless...
I'm an overachiever.
You are an overachiever, Sarah, you are. So what if we were to do that? Is that possible? That we actually just, I mean, all they, because technically what the ordinance says is, I just want people to be engaged, and to tell the city that they're going to be asking for a notice. Can we not have a sign-in sheet at planning and zoning, so those who are participating can actually automatically gain standing?
I believe we already have a sign-in sheet at planning and zoning.
What I'm saying is, could we not add something to the ordinance that basically states that by attending planning and zoning, and participating in the public process, they therefore have standing?
I believe we can do that. I don't do the operations of planning and zoning, so I don't want to commit other people to do it, but...
I'd be for that, all for that. What do you think, Jon?
I think that's fine, but I don't think that that... Yeah. I'm gonna interject here, you know, we've got 30 people signed up, we're through, Jon is number nine, we're at nine o'clock, I mean, 8:46 now, so, I mean, at this rate, I guess we can't spend too much time on one, one topic.
Thank you.
Sure we can.
Councilmember Santos?
Sure we can. Well, Councilmember Moore, I like your suggestion. You know, this, and I'm gonna continue, I didn't get a chance. I let all you guys just go. I like the suggestion, I also like the suggestion of adding a, at planning and zoning, there is a sign-in sheet, perhaps adding a, you know, you can make the requirement, Councilmember Bagley, or you can add a box, say, I'd like, I consider myself a person with standing, and just leave the information, yeah. The one thing that I, I found that was very interesting in the emails, is that this grand conspiracy among council, I don't recall this coming to council, but staff brought this to us at one point, cleaning up the codes. That, I don't get where that, but if you tell a lie, or a rumor, or whatever, enough, it's going to become true. But I do like the idea of making it more prominent on the website, and also more prominent on the website on how to appeal. So, I think those are very good suggestions. This hasn't even gone into effect, we haven't even seen this at first reading yet, so, at first reading, you know, I know Joni's probably taking notes, but perhaps some of those can already be incorporated to first reading. And if not, motions can be made.
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you. So, I'm a little still confused. So as a council member, if I'm not within 750 feet of the note, or in the notice area, and I haven't, as a council member, citizen, whatever I would be, put in my two cents, then by reading the planning and zoning minutes, would that reserve my right and notice to appeal? I don't think so.
Yeah, well, that's a good idea. Council should always have standing.
Well, because it doesn't specifically say that in the code. The planning development, the planning services manager, development services manager has a right to appeal, the city manager has a right to appeal. So I guess city council could direct the city manager to appeal, but that would take four votes. But as a city council member, under the current code, I may in fact not have a right to appeal a planning and zoning decision. So, the other point I think that we have not discussed in this is that, when city, when an appeal comes to city council, there is a second action besides going to district court that the public can take. If you disagree with the final decision of the council, you can collect enough signatures to overturn the council decision. This removes that provision.
Well, doesn't, we discussed that the last meeting, that is not true.
Well, if the city attorney determines that it is not viable for appeal, it will never be seen by council. So, so I'm thinking that there is a process lost here. I mean, if the city attorney says, I don't think this is viable on appeal, then that person then has to go to district court. And then only the district court can tell them that the city attorney aired, and then they could take it to city council, perhaps.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. We discussed this at the last meeting, if this were to go to council, and if it goes to council and is approved, even if an appeal is denied, let's say an appeal is denied, goes to council, council approves, it still can be, through a citizen ballot initiative, either revoked or removed in ordinance, that process is still in effect. That, what you said is not true. Those are one of those fun little arguments that we have, but it's, but again, and I have, you know, we had this, ballot initiatives are still a part of the process. So, that is not true. No, it is not, Councilmember Levinson, again.
We'll disagree, that's okay.
That's true.
Okay, everyone from Kansas.
We're all fine. We're all good. There's just a few things.
Hello, my name is Evelyn Marie Fontanaz. I reside at 1022 Venice Street in Longmont, Colorado. As a Longmont resident, since October of 78, I feel it is my duty as a community member to step up and speak up about affordable housing and low-income housing in Boulder County. I understand about inflation and how the economy fell in the 90s due to the stock market crash. Longmont was a booming town before this happened. I saw how every other house was for sale, causing loss of jobs. Jobs went overseas as a result of the stock market crash too, and also in 2008, when economy crashed. I personally know some seniors that are barely getting by by their income, by their retirement income, not because they never worked in their life, when in fact, it is the opposite, they had a good job with good salary. With the cost of medical insurance, food, utilities, and everyday living costs going up, why must housing be so high? I remember my first house purchase in Longmont in 1978. I had a house payment of $650 PITI. Now my rent is higher than that. Every house, household has a budget, and a housing should, and housing should be a third of your income. How can we, as Boulder County residents, say $1,400 a month for a one-bedroom apartment is affordable? That means a person has to have an income of at least $4,200 a month just to pay rent or a house payment. This is crazy. I know I cannot afford this, even after being fortunate to work at the University of Colorado for 28 and a half years, and I do receive a retirement check every month. Anyone with a family has even more difficulty on top of the medical insurance, food, utilities, and everyday living expenses. They have children going to school. They have to pay for their education, books, and any other activities at schools. A dream of going to college is a thing of the past, because they have to live for today, not the future, which is very unfortunate. Please take, please let's make housing available and affordable in Boulder County a reality again, where people can live and be proud of their community. Let's make Longmont a booming, a booming community again. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you, everyone. Any questions?
Councilmember Levinson?
So let's bring this one up. I'd be curious, just by raising hands, it's forum, let's interact. What did you all think of the idea of putting a ballot measure to the public to set aside affordable housing funds? No, tax, public tax, a sales tax, either one. How many people say absolutely not? Okay. No, whatever. Some type of tax that would then be set aside into an affordable housing fund that the city would use to address affordable housing needs. You'd be for that, Stan?
No.
Against that?
It won't work, nobody will vote.
I'm assuming that it passed, you know? All right, I'm just curious. So my question is, do we want to, do we want to do that?
That's one of the recommendations.
That was one of the recommendations of Task Force. So my question is, I mean, I know that last week we voted to go ahead and change the zoning, so that we could have affordable housing and mixed industrial, or, it's already getting late, it's past nine. Mixed use industrial, thank you, Councilman Santos. So do we want to just go ahead and instruct staff to go ahead and do it?
Put it on the ballot?
They're bringing back the information.
No, I know they're bringing back information, but what I'm saying is, that they're bringing, I mean, we're getting things done tonight. You know, let's just get it done. You know, so we, I, I know we need the data, I know we need the data, but do we still want to tell staff to go ahead and do it? That is my question. Not tonight? Wait, next week?
Nope. We'll wait till we get the data.
All right.
I agree with Councilmember Moore.
Oh, my goodness.
It always happens, it happens a lot more often than you think.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
You got more?
Here, we do need to direct staff to bring us that information, because we need, we do need the data in order to do that. But I think if, if the community sees affordable housing as something that's important to it, then it will be willing to pay for it as well.
Okay. I just want to make one comment. So, sales tax is the most regressive form of tax for lower-income people. So every time you don't, you go and spend money at the supermarket, the percentage, when you're, you don't make a lot of money, the percentage you pay in sales tax is a much greater percentage of your income than if you're making six figures.
Yeah, I understand this, because you've made this point a number of times.
Well, but I have made it open forum, and the other part of it is that we have to take a look at sales tax in general. We're reaching a point where we don't want our sales tax to be 10%, 12%. It's laudable to have all these taxes, but again, you know, I know that Councilmember Bagley doesn't want to vote for any taxes, so we know he won't be voting for that tax.
That's not true.
That's what she said.
No, I'm just getting ripped apart, thanks, Mayor. Stop this. No, I do love you. So I don't think it necessarily needs to be a sales tax. What I'm saying is, we'd instruct staff to use their mega genius brains to bring back an idea that would say, this would work, we'd present it to the public, and it would be a permanent coffer to address this need. I am not advocating sales tax. I don't have the data, but I'm saying, what I would, I just am anxious to just go ahead and, let's just direct staff to get us something to vote on, and then that way we can, so that's all I'm saying. So I'll be ready when I have the four votes.
Sherry Malloy?
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. My name is Sherry Malloy, I live at 2113 Range View Lane. How about a developer tax? How about not hitting the poor, but hitting the developers who are making serious bank? Let's hit them up. I'm here to talk about encouraging citizen involvement and fostering empowerment. I'm speaking about three subjects: the proposed ordinance changing the appeal process, curbside compost collection, and making sustainability and climate action plan a priority. First, the proposed ordinance restricting the appeal process. Some of the things have been touched on, I want to be very, very clear, that the ordinance only allows those who have been involved in the process to be allowed to appeal, or in standing. The reality is, people are busy. This is not about making the website more appealing, or prominent, or easier to click on. This is about not shutting out 99% of the population of Longmont. We are all affected by big development, like the mall, Super Walmarts, Union Reservoir, the turkey plant. You know, the reality is, people are very busy. We elected you to represent us, people, not big business. Jared Polis, a career politician, a member of Congress, whose job is governing, didn't know a fracking operation was going in across from his home until the truck started digging. To expect people to monitor big developers, go to planning and zoning meetings, click on the very user-friendly website, and follow the imaginations of the city is absolutely unrealistic, and quite preposterous, to be honest. For example, the document with this ordinance is over 350 pages long. Okay, so I have to jump around. The elephant in the room is this question: why is this ordinance being proposed? Who or what entity initiated this, and why? Why did Councilman Bagley bring it forward? Why did he want to drop the language "anyone with standing in the state of Colorado," and narrowly restrict it to anyone living within a small, in the neighborhood, or who's been involved in the process? Does the planning and zoning have concerns, and if so, what are they? Why was this not brought to our citizens on the Planning and Zoning Commission, who knew nothing about this? If there are concerns, what's the problem? Specifically, how many appeals have been filed in the last several years? Has this affected staff's ability to do their job? In the interest of honesty, transparency, and accountability, where's the data to support this ordinance? Another... Another large animal question is, who does this ordinance benefit? Certainly, the winners are big developers, entities like the oil and gas industry and other giant corporations. Their only interest is making money. They care nothing about neighborhoods, compatibility, traffic, the environment, quality of life, et cetera. With winners, they're all losers, and sadly, that's the good people in Longmont in this situation. This bad ordinance gives favor to big developers at the expense of people. The bottom line is that this ordinance is anti-due process and deals a severe blow to the rights of ordinary concerned Longmonters to challenge big developers impacting our fair city. It's not only disempowering, it's unethical and unjust. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Unless the data is there suggesting the current appeals process is severely broken, there is no need for this ordinance to proceed. So end of that subject. New subject. Please give serious consideration the February seventeen study session where curbside compost collection will be discussed. People want to do the right thing and reduce their trash output. The pairing of curbside compost collection and a robust pay-as-you throw fee structure accomplishes this. Charging people for trash output, output, like any other utility, makes sense and gives people incentives and more control over their trash bill. Pay-as-you throw, coupled with compost collection and continued recycling, empowers people to do the right thing, which feels good and benefits all. Reducing trips to the landfill by trash trucks saves fossil fuels, CO2 emissions, wear and tear on trucks and staff times. Reducing methane gas by composting and saving other resources by recycling benefits Longmont and our world. Similarly, my final subject is, please empower the good people of Longmont by making sustainability a priority. Thank you for your commitment tonight to resurrect the integrated sustainability plan and update that because it's a little old at this point and looking at new input. I thank you for listening to all of us. That's the very first and important step in empowerment. But if we don't take more steps, we go nowhere. So I ask that you move Longmont forward with real action. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My name was mentioned again, so I figure I better address it. There is no elephant in the room. There might be an elephant in the room for you, but there is no elephant in the room. My councilmembers who know me, how many times have I called anybody about any vote before we've had a council meeting?
Never.
Never? No, no, no. What I'm saying is there's no conspiracy theory. There's no... So, okay, but... I don't understand the elephant then because I can tell you what my thoughts were. Like, for example, when we had that, when we were fighting...
I'd like to see the data from the staff saying that the appeals have bogged them down and they're not able to do their jobs. Where's the data supporting this motion?
And that's... That is not the reason why I decided to bring up the change of standing. I brought that up because, I mean, everybody remembers the oil and gas lawsuits, or one we've settled, one we've not. But the oil and gas regulations that I personally sacrificed for, we had a little intervenor called Koga. I hate intervenors in lawsuits. Carol Glassman, wonderful attorney, just intervened in another lawsuit that I am representing a client in. Interveners make things difficult to settle. And so I am just looking at this as...
Don't give them a voice?
No, they have a voice. What... Where I differ from what I'm hearing from Ms. Malloy is, you're correct. I don't think someone who has not participated in a fight should have the capability of showing up after it's over to say, oh, let's do a redo because I was busy.
And I don't think it's fair to expect that people will follow our imaginations of the city in the Planning and Zoning Department and go to meetings and follow the website and look for any proposed development. That's just not going to happen, and you know it.
And I agree with you on that, except that there is one... You are looking at seven people here. We don't live in a chaotic free-for-all. What it is, is I trust... I might not always agree with Polly Christensen, but if I live in her ward, I'm trusting that she's showing up to meetings, reading her packets, and representing me. Whereas the theory that I'm hearing advocated by the proponents of this way of thinking is that I'm an individual, and I want to show up after it's all over, after everybody's done the process, the bureaucracy and everything, and I want a redo. And that's what fundamentally...
How many times has that happened, Councilwoman Bagley? That's my point. How many times has that happened in the last ten years? Why? So you... So one situation with oil and gas, we have to rewrite, you know, have a whole new change to an ordinance? Limiting ninety-nine percent of the people in Longmont from having their due process?
There's no...
Where's the data? That's my question. Where's the data that supports that the current system is broken?
All... That's not what happened. So city staff...
Then why are you messing with it?
City staff brought forward a proposed ordinance. Okay? And so here's the elephant. So we all take our packets home, and we're supposed to read our packets before council so we can make an informed decision. I personally was reading the packet. Nobody called. I didn't have any discussions. I saw that line in the ordinance, and I thought, man, that could be a headache. And I just clicked my button and said...
But it hasn't been a headache, that's my point. It could be a headache, but it hasn't been a headache.
You don't think the oil and gas regs and Koga intervening was a headache? I can tell you right now, I lost money, sleep, put on about five years of my life. I mean, it was a headache. In general, I think it's bad for people who do not participate in the legal process to come back after the fact.
And I just don't think it's realistic or fair to expect people to be participating in the legal process and not getting any grace at the end.
No, anybody, anybody.
Just letting intimate people help speak business. That's the bottom line. I'm not going to change my mind on that.
It's forum, we're supposed to...
But Koga's not a corporation.
But, and I guess, let me put it this way. If they didn't hear, if they didn't hear, if they didn't hear about... I mean, at what point, if they didn't hear it during all the public proceedings and the planning and zoning and the public notices, what makes you think that it would change any different once it was over? Why would they be less busy after the fact than before the fact?
You're limiting people's due process. There's no way around that. There's no way around that.
I think it's time to move forward. Next speaker is Tracy Hallard. Is there Tracy Hallard here? H A L W A R D? Okay, we'll move on. David Friedland? Friedland? Excuse me? Okay.
I will be very brief for you. My name is David Friedland. I live at ten seventeen Townley Circle. And first of all, I wanted to thank you for your thoughts and your commitment tonight to, you know, put forth a sustainability plan, a climate action plan. I think it's really important. And if we get some sort of plan on the books, I think what I really want to talk about tonight, that follows, curbside composting. And I just want to say thank you for putting the meeting, the study session for... For February seventeenth, putting the study session on the agenda. It's great, thank you so much. I wanted to share with you a little bit of information and just say thank you. And if you have any questions about this, please, you know, don't hesitate to ask. And I look forward to hearing what city staff brings forth on the seventeenth and your comments at that point as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Mark Osborne?
Mark Osborne, nine thirty-seven Danny's Court. I am... I'm going to speak about about the planning and zoning process. I feel a little bit like I'm stepping into the breach here, so it's been a little intense. But I'll tell you, I started thinking... Before I came up here, I was asking myself, what is it I'm going to say? Because I have some private information that's come to me privately. I have a friend who's spoken to a member of the planning department and gotten another perspective. And then I've watched you guys back and forth with clear disagreement about this. And I think, at least for me, I'm a lot clearer. I originally wanted to come in with some specific questions because I was surprised by the things I'm hearing. But after listening to this, I think I've got some more clarity for myself about what it is I feel concerned about and what I would ask you to listen to and consider. The first thing is, I'm hearing an awful lot of discussion that this is a legal process. And I certainly understand that there are legal elements to this, and I don't have any illusions that there, you know, aren't going to be lawsuits or legal discussions. That's fine. But I think one of the very important elements in all of this is that the values of the city, the citizens of this city are considered and listened to. And when you start discussing having standing, I get concerned that we're not paying attention to the citizens' values. Why is that? A lot of people have said, you know, I don't follow this stuff and I don't read the website, blah, 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 blah. The reality is that these issues become public, and they take on a life of their own at a certain point, and people don't become aware of them until that happens. So if you said, for example, we want to work with this concept called standing, but we're going to allow people to get into that process very late in the game because they just became aware of this and they became aware that they perceive this to be a problem, I would say that's fine. You know, I don't have an issue with the notion of standing. But if it's basically going to operate so that people are cut off from participating at the time that the issue is really more public and clear to people, then I would say that's a very serious problem. I don't think... You're right, people can file lawsuits, and you can do appeals, and you can do ballot issues and all that kind of stuff. The reality is, we don't want to operate that way with each other. Okay? It may be really messy to have a public discussion about some of these issues, but I think it's far better to have a messy public discussion than it is to end up with ballot initiatives and lawsuits and all that kind of stuff. Ultimately, you guys have to decide whether something's moving forward or not. I don't think there's a... I hope there's not a question about that, okay? So my first thing is, recognize that there's values here, and this isn't a legal issue. And I think some of the speakers have cited some examples of values. And I think that's very important in the process. We, as citizens who don't watch this stuff all the time, may only become aware of it very late in the game. Second thing is, if I were to give a thumbs up or a thumbs down to, you know, our city attorney at this point, I don't know him. I don't know anything about his job or you. I've certainly listened to you guys. I've heard him speak a few times. I think I'd probably give him a thumbs up. Maybe even a big thumbs up, okay? But the notion that he is the final decision-maker on all appeals seems a little odd to me. Now, if you wanted to say, you know, he's making decisions on legal matters where somebody's trying to appeal a legal matter, great. But I would hope that you would allow for multiple channels for appeal for exactly the reasons that I just described. People come to the awareness of this stuff late in the game, and the publicity sometimes comes late in the game. And I would hope there were multiple channels for an appeal. So when I look at things... When I look at things that say, you know, only residents with seven hundred and fifty feet and those who have standing, I'm hearing, cut off, cut off, cut off. These are yellow flags to me, big yellow flags to me as a citizen. Now, maybe you're... The way you're writing this stuff and when you're doing this is going to work very, very well, and it is intended to be open. But I'm hearing conflict and closing down, and how can we block people off? Do I understand you don't want to deal with some bozo who walks in that you don't... You know, you don't really... Can't even make sense of their argument late in the game? Yeah, I get that, I really do. But I think you have to be able to let people in.
So, thank you for your thoughts. You made some valid points, and...
Yes, please don't treat this as a legal process. Legal components, absolutely, but you gotta keep... Please keep it out of that arena.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would like to thank you for bringing up some valid points and doing it in a very civil manner. I appreciate that. And the thing that resonated most with me was you said, to avoid lawsuits. That's the best argument I've heard yet. Did not change the system. But I really do appreciate your thoughtfulness in your response to this, and I appreciate your demeanor.
And I would give you two, Nate, two thumbs up, not just one thumb up.
But, you know, he won't be there at some point. You know, and I didn't see your confidence in him, and I don't have any problem with that.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you. I think you're... Again, demeanor, points, well said. The only... The only... The only problem that I continue to have is, it is a legal process. By the time the appellate... I mean, the way the system was designed, it is a quasi-judicial process. What that means is we cease to be council members, and we then become judges, seven judges that have to apply laws and facts and make a decision. It's no longer a, you know, oh, I want to share my opinion. It's no longer, here's what I think. I mean, we have public hearings. But theoretically, that's the whole point. By allowing an appeal, what you're saying is, we're allowing a lawsuit, and it's now into a realm where it's all legal. And I'm trying to avoid that. And I hear what you're saying.
I understand that. And I would just say that I hope that if the chorus of citizens speaking up about an issue is getting bigger and bigger and bigger and expanding, or, you know, they're making... I would hope that that message from the citizens is not run over by the legal process.
I concur with that.
Okay? And I understand what you're saying. And the one comment I would make to you is, be aware of your own background and experience. aware of your own background and experience. I'm understanding from the conversation, you're an attorney and you're...
I try to be. I play one in real life.
All the time. So, you know, you're probably, your perspective probably rather strongly anchored there.
A little bit. A little. Another thing I realized during, I mean, I'm not necessarily a fan of the, there's other components to this. What I'm defending is the standing argument, not necessarily the city attorney being the review person, or the...
Okay, so my question to you is, defending the standing argument is fine, but how is that going to be used? Is it going to be used to exclude people where there's literally a voice trying to speak to you? Or is it going to say, "Look, you know, if in fact you're just waking up to this issue now, and you want to come in and join the process, you're going to say, 'No, you're out of here.'" What's, how are you intending to implement that? That matters a lot.
Questions. So we've got two more hearings on this.
Yes. So I was extremely confused before I heard about the last three or four speakers, and now I'm, you know, beginning to understand at least a few pieces of what's going on here. I know I need to attend this discussion and presentation about how this works and what's changing, but I hope some of those fundamentals are clear.
Thanks, Mayor Robinson.
And Mark, I really do like the point that you made about the fact that it's a values discussion, because people are talking about being asked at planning and zoning to give testimony about what they think about a plan that is a value judgment, essentially. Do you like the architecture? Does it, you know, work with the environment? These are all components of what planning and zoning has to decide on, with compatibility with surroundings, compatibility with code. And I think what people don't realize is, even at the planning and zoning level, they sit as a quasi-judicial function, too. And so they are only allowed to even take evidence on specific things that, in the code, that they're allowed to. And I guess the question becomes, if there are other things that influence the development that planning and zoning doesn't have in their wheelhouse, how's that going to get addressed? Like, if there's some major environmental issue that has to do with the development that, you know, that might not be something they've ever dealt with, and they can't delegate anything to Board of Environmental Affairs, only council can. So then you have this other issue of different aspects that they may not be confident in what they see every day. So you bring up some really valid points, and I think we're going to have, continue to have some pretty rigorous public discussion around this, and I, because really, when people are coming to planning and zoning, they're not looking at it as a legal, or they're going, when they're going to their neighborhood meeting, when they have the neighborhood meetings, that's considered the value part of the discussion. And when it gets to planning and zoning, the value part is no longer there. It's really just the legal matter.
Yes, I have no insight into that. You're describing it as, I'm hearing a group of people are heads down, focused on a lot of details, some of them legal, you know, some of them policy and so on, you know, whereas citizens kind of way back here, all of a sudden you hear, see an article in the newspaper, somebody's talking, and you go, "They're doing what?" And, you know, some of those are reactionary kinds of reactions that all of us may have from time to time, but, you know, when a group of people start doing that, it's like sometimes that distinction between forests and trees got missed, and that happens.
Counselor Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Mark, it's kind of like this conversation. What some people have perceived and got a lot of people riled up about, perhaps they need to actually read the ordinance, because in part of it, I'm not going to read it verbatim because I don't have it up on my computer, but it says, you know, yes, the appeals go to the city attorney first to see if there's, if the appeal is, I guess, valid. Yes, seven days to, if I remember correctly, seven days to say yea or nay. Within that seven days, after that seven-day period, if it's a nay, it gets sent back to the, bless you, the appellant. And it can be reworded and reworked, and basically, the city attorney is going to say, "This is what's wrong with your appeal," basically almost telling the appellant how to correct it. That's the discussion we had when we went over this a week or two ago. So there are, there's a mechanism for it to be appealed after it's been denied by the city attorney. So, just, again...
That sounds legitimate. Here's, I don't know the answer here. Here's the question I would ask you to consider. Is that even the right channel for the appeal, or should it be the only channel? It's not that there's anything wrong with that or wrong with what you're describing.
And again, let's say the appeal's denied completely. It goes through council, voted on, yea or, you know, it gets voted on and passed, whatever it is. Again, it can be, you know, and no one, well, apparently Longmont loves citizen initiative, initiatives, which can be good and can be bad, but there is another option to appeal the decision of city council.
Okay, I think it's time to move on to the next speaker. Just, Councilman Regal?
Mayor Coombs, and here's, I guess, this isn't a hill I want to die on. And I just want to point out, you know, if we, if I made the motion next week to just, "Let's kill it, it's fine." Everyone will clap, and there's a political victory, and, you know, and, but I'm going to go home, and right now, the words in there say that you don't have standing right now. You show, I mean, it says, I mean, the way the ordinance reads right now, without any action, you don't show up to planning and zoning and get standing. So I'm just pointing out that, I mean, I will not defend this, but when it comes off the table, you've won. I'm not willing to battle with the citizens over this issue, but you don't have any standing right now. So if you go to planning and zoning and you don't live within a certain amount of the, you don't have standing. This way, you at least have something. So, I mean, I'm not going to fight this, but it's, I don't know what else to say, other than, "I'm not going to fight this anymore. You've won. It's not worth politically, it's not worth financially, it's not worth the stress." But as it stands right now in the laws of Longmont, Colorado, unless you live within X amount of feet of a project, and unless you own the project, unless you're a developer, you have no say legally.
Legally, yeah.
The ordinance, I'm just saying, right now, as it stands right now, you have to have standing under laws of Colorado to have say. So I'm going to back off, but you have no standing. And if you go to planning and zoning, you sign in or click on the website, you have no say. You can never appeal. No chance. I just want, that's the last thing I'm going to say tonight.
What? Well, thank you, Brian. Richard Judea?
Hi, I'm... The what? I'm not going to find it. I'm right there. I'm Richard Judea, 114042 Hawthorne Circle here in Longmont. Before I came down here, I had no idea that I was going to find myself talking about oregano and George W. Bush, but I actually am. It has been said that lawyers and oregano have something in common. You really need some of them, but it's really easy to overdo it as well. And frankly, Councilmember Bagley, I think that we've got too much oregano going on this particular issue. I'm, and with respect to George W. Bush, I think it was he who said that governing would be just a whole lot easier if he were king, you know, didn't have to bother with all of the various people. At any rate, the, I'm kind of reminded of something that Doug Brown told me. He's the hardest-working city councilman I have known. He made a 50-hour-a-week job out of something that didn't pay very well, but he studied the theory of cities quite a bit, and he gave me an interesting memory. He said about $85,000 is the right, the most efficient population level. Said that there are economies of scale that push toward a larger city, but then there is the, that members of staff, and maybe council as well, beyond that size, lose their sense of individual accountability and visibility to the public. And maybe we've gotten bigger than that, but we need to think back about being a smaller town. I really will underwrite what Mark just said. I thought that was very well done. And the, what I would suggest to you along that line is that to remember that this is a, in this city, it's a republic, not a strict everybody-votes-on-everything kind of democracy. And as a Democrat, it irks me a little bit to have to say that this is a republican form of government here in the city. But at the same time, you must maintain transparency and accessibility by the citizenry. And I really like the idea that by being a citizen in town, that by being affected by a development, that that gives me standing, whether in the strict legal sense or not, and whether I came aboard at the very earliest portion of a development action. And I have some experience with this on the union annexation. So there it is. So we've got too much oregano going, and I hope we can back off of that some.
Any questions, counsel?
I like oregano. I love oregano. The only thing I have is, you know, I need to touch base with you after to talk about how to paint furniture. My wife and I are having some woodworking issues. Well, good comments, thank you.
And I really appreciate you having the, these open discussions. That's just super.
Thank you, Richard.
Dwayne Leese?
Mayor, members of council, my name is Dwayne Leese. I live at 2686 Pearl Howlett Road, Longmont, Colorado. I had a bunch of comments put in place, but first of all, to you, Dennis, we've made considerable investment into our building for energy efficiency with new windows and also with LED lighting. I could give a flying, whether I save money on it or not. It's all about sustainability. I want to be here. I want my children to be here. In 100 years from now, no one is going to remember any of this here. Nobody's going to talk about us. They're not going to say, "Oh, Mr. Bagley was such a great councilman." Not going to happen, sorry.
Well, it's the opposite.
It just, it just isn't, even the opposite isn't going to happen. But what we can do is we can be of service to higher ideals, and sustainability, giving back, being thankful for our environment. Oh, come on, let's get on board. Let's do it. Let's get a parade, and let's get in front of that parade. We can do it, and I mean, it needs to be done. It's not a matter of if, maybe, oh, kind of, sort of. No, it needs to be done. It's serious. 30, 40, 50 years from now, we may be putting 30%, 40% of our gross national effort into dealing with climate change, and that's putting a dollars-and-cents thing onto it. It's about more than that. I love to see the birds in the air. I love to see the ecology. I love that. It makes my world, it is my world. Sustainability. It's not a, "Oh, we're going to tax ourselves, we're going to take something away from ourselves. Oh, we're going to have to tighten our belts to have sustainability." No! That's upside-down, inside-out thinking. We're going to have more employment because we got to do this. It's not going to be done by machines, it's going to be done by people. That's employment. That's one thing I wanted to say, just, you know, that's really an important issue. Let's get on board with this. I'm proud. I am proud to my core that Longmont said no to fracking. The values that that stated, what it told the American people, what it did as leadership, I'm on board. I feel good about it. You had an engineer who was here in town, who came to live here, an engineer, because, "Oh, they did the fracking ban and thought that we would be on board with the sustainability and all of that." We are going to attract people who are upwardly mobile and are capable of self-selecting into the city by doing sustainability. Come on, get with the program. Get with the program. It's so easy. It's just a matter of doing it. Please. And the other thing is, the individual and the people of the community, all the people who have come here tonight, that's the value. So don't close them out of the zoning and planning stuff. And I do get, and I do feel very, very strongly, that this is not something that's going to be, "Oh, let's bring more people into the process." And you're going to have to, you're going to have to make difficult votes. And all of you, think about it. Our country was, is based upon the fact that the power to govern comes from the individuals. If you take the individuals out of the equation, if you push them away, if you push them away, you are disenfranchising those people, and you are flying in the face of what a democracy is, even a representative democracy.
Thank you, Dwayne. Since you addressed me, you know, I feel like I have been walking the walk and talking the talk from the get-go with my, on my own personal life. You know, 50% of the world lives within 200 miles of an ocean. I mean, that's, I'm not a climate denier, I never have been.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, it has to be communal effort, coming together, and there are things that the community has done, but standing up and saying, "Yes! Sustainability! I'm there! I believe in it! Yes!" Here, we'll stand up, they will. And it's not funny. It's serious. It's deadly serious. We think about, I don't know, we think that the world is going to be like it's always been.
Thank you, Dwayne. I guess, Bob Norris?
Yeah. Go for it, James. Okay.
A little free advertising here. It's the Notre Dame, Tennessee, for the fifth time in a row.
They didn't do so on the football this year.
Yeah, but they have had the highest graduation record in all sports for the last five years. I am Bob Norris, a 532 Ryder Ridge Drive, and, you know, you're past my snack time. Speaking of which, how many people in the room have ever gone to an El Comete dinner? El Comete fundraising dinner. Everybody up here just about? Oh, okay, I asked how many people here have gone to an El Comete dinner, which is February 28th this year, the best food in town, and I'll warn you, the speaker is our sheriff, Joe Paley, so I don't want to have to send him around to collect you. And also Joe Bateta, who's chairs the Latino Chamber of Commerce. I better get to business here. The first speaker brought up a couple of things that I thought about when he was talking, and kind of connected with sustainability. We need to be concerned about sustainability of people's cultures, regardless of where they came from. I would also mention that part of this is, we need to do a better job of getting people on boards and commissions that don't look like me, for several reasons, but... Other thing that occurred to me, and I wasn't here with all the discussions about housing and putting in an industrial area, but I just think of putting children, raising children in that kind of a zone, I don't think it's appropriate. But to get down to what, the reason I really came here is to talk to you about a program that I learned about when I was at a national conference, immigrant integration conference in December, and that is that several cities have now joined the Cities for Citizenship. And what these cities are, they're large cities, so they have more staff and more money, but they are taking some of their staff, working entirely on immigration issues. But the one interesting thing they're doing is they're giving their staff that are permanent legal residents time off to go and take their courses, to do the interviews for citizenship. In other words, they're making it easier for those people to be citizens. And why do you want to do that? Well, for one thing, people who want to become citizens earn more money. And very careful studies have shown that the children of people who go from permanent legal residents to citizens do better in schools, and I think that's enough argument for doing it. So I'm asking council and the city manager to look into, first of all, how many permanent legal residents do we have working for the city, and what can we do to make it easier for them to become citizens? Because too few people are becoming citizens, and some of it's because of money. There is a fee waiver if you make less than 150% of the poverty level, and of course, poverty level here in Boulder County is higher than it is a lot of places. They're not automatic... The City of Denver has joined on that. And I've been speaking with a woman that runs that program, and she would be willing to talk to you, Councilman Levertson. I don't know if you've had that conversation with her yet, but I've made that connection. And the last thing that occurred to me when we were talking, again, Councilman Levertson mentioned about sales tax being a high percentage, a higher percentage of income for low-income people. I attended a conference at Colorado Physical Institute last week, and one of the numbers that popped out of there was that the lower-income people, the bottom 10%, spend on average about 13.5% of their money on taxes. The top 10% spend about 8.5%. That's combined all taxes. And Colorado taxes are lower than almost every other state, except for one tax, and that's the tobacco tax. And we have moved down further in where we are and our standing, how much tax we collect. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Carol Mathis-Craft?
Oh, Councilmember Christensen. Okay. Bob, I wanted to thank you for coming. And I know you have a lot of contacts with the Latino community. And I would really like to see you encourage people to run for boards and also run for city council, mayor, and whatever, you know, because that's what we need for everybody to have a voice. Thanks.
I encourage people, but I'm only one person.
I know, I know, I know. And we have to. But...
Go ahead.
I'm Carol Mathis-Craft. I lived at 222524th Avenue. I want to talk about the housing issue, especially for low-income people. I applaud the city for working with the Longmont Housing Authority because that will give us some more affordable housing. But we are significantly down on both affordable housing and low, what I consider low-income housing. Those are the people that can't even afford the affordable housing. And most of these people, if they're working full-time, they might make $15,000 to $17,000 a year maximum, and they can't possibly pay $1,000 a month or more in rent. Most of these people are, that I see, well, I'm a volunteer nurse at St. Benedict's Health and Healing Ministry. They have a weekly nursing clinic at the Hour Center. And I probably could have filled, in the last two years that I volunteered, probably 100-unit apartment building with single men who are working or on disability or getting social security. So they have an income, but they have no place to live because they can't afford 30% or more of their income for housing. And so they are essentially homeless, or what we call couch surfing, they're staying with friends, relatives. So they're in the homeless category. And so what we need, as we're looking at a diversity of housing, not only the market-rate housing and the affordable housing, but my category of low-income housing that are small units, studios, like 300 to 400 square feet, even these little mini homes that you see advertised on TV lately, those would be perfect for these people where they wouldn't have to spend so much of their money on housing. I would support increasing the property tax to do this. I know that probably is not popular with a lot of people, but property tax in Colorado is low compared to many places. And even as a senior, I would support paying more in my property tax so we would spread the burden around to everybody that owns property and not a burden to those people who are renting. We need a diversity of people in the city. I think a city is stronger when we have diversity. Businesses need people that they can pay minimum wage to. I wish the minimum wage were higher, but you're always going to have people at the minimum wage. And those people need to be able to live in the city in which they work. They can't afford money for transportation to live in another city and come here to work. So I think, so we don't avoid problems down the road, we need to have this low-income housing also. And really, a healthy community is a diverse community, and I think we need to take care of our citizens. And the city council has a mechanism to help support, to be the fundraiser, if you will, for the money that we have agencies like Housing Authority, Habitat, other agencies that can build these properties and manage them, but we need the funds. And I know that there's lots of people we see at the Hour Center who have an income, have down payments, all of the things that they need, have a Section 8 housing voucher, but they can't find a place to live. And we can't wait till the end of this year to fix this problem because it still takes a number of years to actually build these units. So I urge city council to act quickly to start figuring out how can we get this money pot that we can help people in building these units? And to think about not only affordable, but this low-income housing, small studio apartments for one or a couple with no children. It's not, you know, single men looking for a place to live is not glamorous. Children, families with children are glamorous, and we can help them. But we have this whole other population that needs your support. Thank you.
I guess I'd like to make a comment about one of your comments on property tax wouldn't affect the housing cost.
Well, it does. The owner of the apartment building is going to pass that on. You know, the money's got to come from someplace. And that's the only thing I can think of to make it, at least spread it around to more people than just the builders.
Yeah, to homeowners, everybody.
Yeah, to everybody.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coos. So, yeah, commented earlier, it's a very important issue for council, and we want to take it seriously. There's also legislation going through, trying to be passed at the state level to deal with things like construction defect legislation, where builders have not done condominiums, for example, for sale property for many years because they get sued almost every time. So that's one approach to a multifaceted solution to this problem. Habitat for Humanity for equity building for families. The population is just stragged if people have jobs, they have, they can pay a little bit, but not what they actually get in Longmont. So, yeah, we have to find a source of funding. We also have to find a way to work with the private development community in order to provide, for them to help us with the financing of this, by giving them the reason to want to build those kind of units, whether, and quite frankly, I'm more of a proponent for mixed-income projects, so that we have a mix of market rate all the way down to 30% AMI, so that we get, we get that diverse population in one location. So as I mentioned, working a lot, this is an important issue for council, and we will hopefully get to it sooner rather than later.
Thank you. And to, again, consider those small units, because there's a whole population in Longmont that...
Those microhouses that you see.
Yes, yes, microhouses.
I just want to make one more comment, is, you know, homelessness and affordable housing, workforce housing, it's a regional problem. And, you know, it's like, if Louisville and Lafayette and Erie aren't stepping up, and only Longmont, Boulder, and Denver, and Boulder are providing housing, it's, we really need to get the whole region involved with the solution. I'm not sure how to accomplish that, but it's a regional problem. Councilmember Christensen?
Well, Mayor, you read my mind, because I'm one of the consortium of cities, and there is a proposal right now on a countywide basis to work on this, because it is a countywide problem, well, it's a countrywide problem, but it's a countywide problem if you just have one group working on it, one city, that leaves other problems with all the other cities. So the proposal is to get some federal funding to help and to deal with, say, let's fix up this one region at a time, and then we'll move on and put all our money that we get into one town at a time, and then we'll move on to the next town, and then we'll move on to the next town. And over a course of five years, we'll be able to accomplish more, and everybody will be developing, you know, more or less equally, and we'll be able to fix this on a regional basis. I think that's a, it's, but you're right, there's a very, it's not glamorous having a 250-square-foot apartment, and, but it's really what's needed. People need a roof over their heads, a place they can cook so they can save money, and live a dignified life. You know, however little money you have, you have a right to dignity. Thanks.
Thank you.
One more, and then take a... Councilmember Bradley?
But do you have standing, Carol? Okay. And I guess, and I think that, I, my only concern is, I think that if we wait too, I mean, I think everybody's heart's in the right place. My only, my concern is, if we don't just do something, it'll never get done. And so, I mean, that's why, I mean, I think we should really think long and hard between now and next regular session about just instructing staff to come up with a plan that would address Councilmember Levertson's concern, not put the, excuse me, not put the burden on the poorest among us. And as much as I hate to think of paying more property taxes, where else is it going to come from? That would be fair. So...
Councilmember Christensen?
Well, evenly distributed between all the entities in town, because it's an issue, and it's important for businesses and private citizens and all of us. Now, I forgot what I was going to say. Oh, okay, so the thing is, we also need to solicit some developers who specifically do affordable housing. Tell them what we need. Find out from other cities who've done this. Who does this? Who does this effectively and creatively? Because these don't have to be awful places. I've seen some wonderful, really great-looking places. And get, solicit developers who specifically do this, and say, "This is what we need. Give us a proposal." Get, you know, pick the ones that we can get.
Gregory Iwan, I-W-A-N-1615, Sherman Lane. I'm trained as an urban and regional planning, a planner. I'm here to reinforce discussion about your new proposed land development code. I've worked on both sides of the NIMBY issue, the not-in-my-backyard. I've won about as many as I've lost, but I've done this in 94 different markets in the US. I'm greatly disappointed at the apparent hysteria that leads this body to a desperate choice of restricting constituent dissent. Is the real issue property rights? In 1926, no less than authority than the Supreme Court of the United States held that no property right is allotted. Those who feel they can may look up Village of Euclid, Ohio v. Ambler Realty. Here's one example of possible facts, and more important, what those facts can mean. It's easy to picture an economic development pitch wherein a proponent seeks to build a private prison, a landfill, a nuclear power plant, or intends to expand an airport. If I own the land involved, am I happy? Probably. If I have rational concerns about the changes in the quality of life for myself and all my neighbors, for or against, what will I do? What if something like this is planned across the road from my kid's school? What can I do? Under this new code, essentially, nothing. I have read it. It's more than a sad day when elected representatives even wish to discourage any citizen's interest in his or her whole city. What does that promote, really? What emerges to me is an urge to support development at Longmont's edges, where very few live within 750 feet of anything. But take care, your new code discriminates unfairly against all who would address the costs and problems that can occasion new development in any part of the city today or in the future. I live within 750 feet of almost everything when it comes to my right to petition for redress and to assert that the emperor has no clothes. You, as councilmembers, were elected to keep up the most, the quality of life enjoyed or not, by all Longmont citizens. No residents, by the way, pays the taxes necessary to support it. And extended infrastructure costs to the edge or beyond cost more than bridging income gaps. You're already raising water and electric rates. Even assuming you don't give all our extra water to the frackers, more increases are sure to come under this scenario. To the many people out there who try to live and fix income or to inch their way up the wage scale, this is no trivial proposition. Perhaps you think this discontent a mere thunderstorm that will pass. I think you're wrong. What's true is that photos of a future Longmont will no longer reveal the genteel city that
Thank you for your comments. Any thoughts made? I think it's time to take a 10-minute break.
break.[395.59]
Somehow, we have to have things for our families. I spent money going to Denver, Arvada-Lowton. I bought food in Denver, Arvada-Lowton. I bought gas, and you buy souvenirs. We have all this money and all these people not helping the environment driving, going out of this town to do all this stuff. So, that's what I think we need. A great big climbing wall, not just a little one. A bigger, another swimming pool. These rec centers, I don't know if you've been to any of them around here. They're fantastic. There are families there all day, all night. It's a family thing. It's not just her youth. We have an ice skating rink open three months a year. It's not big enough, and it's not open on New Year's Day. And I know we want to give our employees time off, but you know what? There's employees that want to work that extra time on New Year's Day. If your family wants to go ice skating on New Year's Day, you can go ice skating on New Year's Day, unless you go to another town. Anyway, I'm here for the youth, for the families, and I think we, I know there's a task force, or there's a feasibility study going on. I can't get much about it, or who's on it, or... I have people that would love to volunteer to be on things like this. So, um, I'm here for the kids. So, I hope you're here for the kids. Thanks. And for the families.
Thank you, Janet. All the contributions.
Whatever. Thank you for coming. I, I was just talking to the guy who was cutting my hair, trying to make me look a little more improved, um, today, about how we don't have much stuff for kids and for younger people in their twenties. It's, you know, we can't expect people to stay unless we've got something more fun to do.
We have lots of things for 21-year-olds.
Yeah, but not just drinking.
For 21 and up, we have, there's music every night in this town.
Yeah.
There's art everywhere in this town. There's breweries everywhere.
Right. But, but sports facilities are good, healthy things, too. And, and we have lots of people on council who are very sporty.
It's not everybody.
But kids need, but more.
Get on a nice bike, and you'll be able to run so greenways.
Right.
And also, you can't let kids do that by themselves. Careful with families, you know?
Yeah.
Is affordable.
Yes, yes. So, thanks for speaking about that, because it is something we, I think we all are on board about. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
Janet, I just wanted to thank you for all your work with kids over the years. You've just been, one of the things is the best about Longmont. You just epitomize that. You really do, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
Janet, several council members have very young kids, like myself. Six and nine. So, I understand what you're talking about. You know, we, uh, my daughter plays basketball in the city league, and trying to get to the rec center and trying to find a parking space was, you know, you have to shark for a parking space. But, uh, you know, the, um, to Sandstone Ranch, there's a box culvert that should be opening up.
It's open.
It's open now. That's right.
You can...
So, you can, basically, you can go ride or walk underneath 119 to Sandstone. Now, it's still quite a ways out. Oh, I know, I know. It's even long from where I live. Exactly.
Your mic's still on.
You're still on your time. No, and I understand that. I'm just saying, instead of crossing out a light, there's way, there's, you know, there is a way. But one thing my wife always reminds me of, there's really no connection from, um, Stephen Day Park to that, um, to that, uh, to Sandstone yet. That's coming one of these days. I'm looking at Dale, shaking his head. And I agree with you, and we're looking, you know, the feasibility...
Are you gonna let your kids go out there by themselves?
No, I would go with them, of course, as a family. No, I understand, I don't...
If you've got a 10-year-old, you could put him on a bus, and they could go out to the skate park. But there's no bus.
Uh, no kidding. With RTD, and we, we have a problem there as well. But I understand what you're saying. There needs to be more things for kids fifth, you know, 19 and un, 20 and under. Yes. You know, it's been a while since I was 20 and under. But I, but, and I, and I agree with what you're saying. You know, there's the feasibility study that we're hopefully, um, looking at and eyes and rent a new pool, whether it's at Centennial Pool or somewhere else. But also working with the school district as well. They have skin in this game as well to help not only their students district-wide, but also the, the students that live in the city of Longmont.
They're all our kids.
Right. I agree with you.
And we have a school system, and yes, they should have built a pool in every school, like, but they didn't. So, you know, somewhere, we have to pick up the gap.
No, and I agree. I was, I was one of those kids long ago before, you know, you know, being a little bit at large. Um, I was that swimmer that got up at four o'clock in the morning to go get in the pool at another town at six. So, no, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, and we're, there are many options that we're looking at.
My concern, too, is that I know Centennial is in a strategic location. And to me, we cannot deprive that neighborhood of that facility, or of a facility that...
Well, hopefully, if, and it's 40-plus, because my wife tries to tell me, it's 40-plus years old, but she's younger than that.
There's no facility, but it's used.
Exactly. But it may be one that may need either be 100% refurbished or basically rebuilt. So, that's what part of that feasibility study is looking at.
And we have to be careful where we put it, because we have to serve the end.
Sure, of course.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks.
That wasn't a "thank you" way, it was an awesome comment.
Margaret, uh, Dickmore? Is there a Margaret Dickmore here? Okay, I'll move. How about Gil Maston? Okay.
Thank you. I think Gil lasted till break time, and then he left. Uh, Strider Binstone, 951 Seventeenth Avenue.
You always have standing.
Standing, yeah. Cool. Um, I, um, I may be dressed kind of funny tonight, but Sunday, my bike threw me real bad, and because I can't get her fixed because of issues. Um, and, uh, so I hit really hard, and the bike isn't workable now, so I had to find alternate transportation. So, consequently, you may not recognize me, but I'm the dude who spoke yesterday. Um, and I think I went over my three minutes. But, um, after waiting 50 years to say something, you know, it's kind of hard. Um, tonight, President Obama gave his State of the Union address, which I don't think anyone here has heard yet. Um, but, um, uh, and, um, I'm not a Democrat with Big D, but the Republican Party has tried desperately the last six years to destroy the economy, and they have not succeeded. Uh, actually, Dow Jones is 18,000 now. Uh, six years ago, it was what, 6,500, 7,000, something like that. We've had 58 months of continual, uh, job growth in the private industries. That's by far the longest period in American history. But, um, uh, the, um, Martin Luther King said 52 years ago, he said, "There's a problem in this country where Negroes in the South cannot vote, and Negroes in the North have nothing for which to vote." Um, so we had the lowest election turnout in recent memory this past term. And, um, but a lot of things are taking place. Pope Francis, um, recently said that God indicates that it should not be that only the super-rich have a right to live on this planet. Um, he was pretty serious about that. Uh, he had his Christmas message. He said, "Merry Christmas, you power-mongering hypocrites" to the College of Cardinals. Now, it's pretty serious stuff. The world is in crisis. Um, uh, the Pope also indicated that Cubans are part of the human race, and that maybe we should not continue to starve them after 55 years of effort. And President Obama agrees. And the Pope is coming out with an encyclical on climate change in a few months. That'll be very interesting. But our new Congress, uh, have, say they're dedicated to prevent or reverse all of these gains. And we've had some discussion about the climate as to how serious that is. Um, the, um, um... 50 years ago, we marched for the right to vote. I got my head beat in on the bridge. I led the Internal Security Force at night on the March to Montgomery. Um, but back in the 1880s to 1910, for 25 years, it was a hardcore effort to eliminate the right to vote for people of color. And they succeeded in the South. Um, now we have a Supreme Court, Citizens United, and the Title V removal and stuff is re-instituting that very same process called Jim Crow. And if we don't stop it, we're gonna have, um, we're gonna have that, that kind of severity of, of division. The, um, um, tonight, oh my gosh, um, the, um... Next to the president's wife, I believe, is Ms. Amelia Boynton, who I spoke with in Selma both personally and in public several times five years ago. She's going to be 104 years old this year. She's the woman you see people carrying unconscious off the bridge. Let me close, I see time is quick, with a little poem I may have done before. "It's been a long road ahead now from Ducktown to Longmont, and I pray there's still more yet to come. I've been pushing this plow over hard, stony ground, trying to plant y'all some trees and some flowers. I've seen many cold dawns and strode mostly alone while I worshipped the sun and the snow. And I've captured the memory of all I've encountered, and I'm trying to make sense of it all. Someone gave me a mission I've been trying to be true to as I ran, as I plowed every step of the way. Yet my guides had been scattered, wearing many disguises while I listened to what they might say. Some spoke backwards, some frontwards, some screamed and then cursed, first at me, then at that which I loved. But I've searched for the meaning of what all I've encountered as an off-cryptic sign from above. Now confusions had plagued me, many dangers waylaid me as I ran up this crooked old trail. I keep getting back up from the swamp and the muck, praying someone might stand for my bail. But the night has been long, crafted many a song and found hope, my beloved..." That, I'm sorry. "The night has been long stifled many a song that my heart is still longing to hear. And I try even now, though I still ain't learned how to dispel that own demon, my fear. And it keeps right on lurking, crushing all of my working, working for love, beauty, justice, and truth. So, my path kept on winding to escape the confining prison walls which have stolen my youth. And I ran up the mountain, shout my name to the stars, then returned to my hovel alone, knowing nothing is promised but to do what I came for, and to stand up and sing you my song."
Thank you. And thanks for speaking at the event yesterday, at the Martin Luther King Event, and supporting that.
I was really pleased in the multicultural action group that pulled together. I thought they did a wonderful job. And the last two or three years, very few people have shown up for a dialogue night. And now we had about 80, so it's like, very good.
Good evening. Kelly Mahoney, 708 Bluegrass Drive. Um, I'm really excited about all the composting discussions, because goodness knows I stink at it in my backyard. But that's not what I'm talking about, so. Um, first topic. Um, in December, city council voted to have the tax dollars put towards to hiring Kaplan, Kirsch, and Rockwell without a budget or an agenda contained in the contract. Times Call reported that there are closed sessions being held between Tim Barth and KKNR. I would like those discussions to be open to the public, and I would like council to help me understand what these attorneys are doing for the city and for us, tax-paying citizens. What are they focusing on and working on while charging the city $400 an hour? Second thing I'd like to say is regarding the Maohai drop zone. About a month ago, it was discovered that Maohai Skydiving Company is not paying for their drop zone land use. The city is allowing the company to use 40 acres of public land for free while the company generates nuisance, noise, trespassing, safety complaints all year round. Um, nothing is for free these days, and certainly, land usage of 40 acres should not be free. So, I urge city council to put a moratorium on the use of public property as the parachute landing area. My last point I have this evening is regarding to the low-flying aircrafts coming out of Longmont Airport over our southwest neighborhoods. While Maohai is definitely the worst offender, many other aircraft cross over my roof at irresponsible low altitudes. They move the top of my trees, and I said in December, "I can definitely see some of the pilot's eyes. It's only a matter of time before you have to deal with a plane crashing into a house." So, please take time to drive through our neighborhood and experience for yours, for, experience it for yourself. But in the meanwhile, I have a really cool video. Um, at this time of the video, it's the fourth time this plane, and it's the Maohai Twin Otter skydiving plane flew over my house this way. And we finally got our camera ready on the fourth time it flew over our house. Note the perfect blue sky, no wind. And also note that this plane still has over a mile to go till it reaches the runway. Why is this an acceptable flight path when the aircraft is still more than a mile away? Maybe KKNR can help me in my neighborhood. On December 8th and January 15th, I sent city council emails on another aircraft incident and haven't heard anything back. Um, I'm not deterred by all the misleading information from Tim Barth has sent me and the Aviation Easements threatened by the airport advisory board. Um, city council has owned our neighborhoods as residential, and there needs to be some kind of guarantee to the safety of our homes and families when it comes to the airport operations. I hope my concerns are being investigated, and I look forward to hearing, um, details, um, on these investigations for my legitimate concerns. That's all I have for this evening.
Councilmember Van.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you for coming tonight. I can only speak for myself, and I've spoken plenty tonight, but I've already talked about standing. Let's talk about jurisdiction. No, the, uh, which is different than standing. The, uh, and I've, I've actually met with quite a few people, like, anyway, we get emails from quite a few folks. And me speaking personally, I've met, like, I went out to, is it Justin Newway? Um, anyway, I went out and met with him, and, and actually sat on his porch before ringing the doorbell to hear the Twin Otter, so I could get a, you could hear it. You know, you could. Um, and me personally, I'm at a loss. You know, just, I'm just telling you, I don't know. You know, and so we get a lot of emails, but me personally, I don't respond to them, because I don't know what to say.
I hope you realize the noise isn't just the issue. It's also the safety concerns of the obvious example that I have, and that happens all...
And so, I guess the, and so I guess the thoughts that come to my mind, you know, one, it's the city's airport. So, you're absolutely right that we, as the owners, you know, it seems to make sense that we should be able to do something, right? Um, what we've heard, and this kind of goes to your, a couple of questions and concerns. So, uh, what I've been told from my first day on city council, I think the first time I was ever on city council, Kimberly Gibbs, who's over there, spoke about this issue. And, uh, uh, we're told by our attorneys and by the airport manager that, you know, federal law says that, you know, we don't have any jurisdiction. If it's in the air, it's the FAA and the feds, it's not us. So, um, this issue's not going away. Um, so why don't we bring in an expert who can tell us for sure what we can and cannot do, and figure something out? Because what I don't, I personally, what I don't want, um, it might be true that we can't do anything about Maohai. I have no idea, no idea. Nor do I know if it is or is not the problem that people say it is. But we need to find out, and it needs to be addressed. Um, but then the question, because if we don't, what I don't want to have happen is, you know, so much public outcry occurs that then we get rid of our airport, when it's just a couple of people who are, I think, not doing what they should be doing and making people upset. So, that's why I want the, personally, just speaking for myself, that's why I want the expert on, on federal aviation law to come and talk to us. Now, as far as public versus private meetings, when we're meeting in executive session, there's a very specific topic. And every time we try to get off-topic, Eugene May, or the mayor who runs those meetings, says, "We need to stay on-topic, because technically, it's illegal to talk about anything other than the topic." And usually, those topics have to do with things that are attorney-client privilege. So, let's suppose, for example, and we're not, the city's gonna sue Maohai. You know? That's not necessarily, when we're getting legal advice from our attorneys, that's not necessarily something that we want to be talking about. Strategy, what we can and cannot do. And so, as far as the airport's concerned, when we're in executive session, it's been specifically about, tell us our legal options. So, then as a legislative body, we can then convene in public and discuss it, and make a decision, and instruct staff on how to proceed. Um, I do know that there's, uh, there's talk among council and staff that we would like the public, I think it was you who suggested it, I think, um, giving the public the opportunity to have a Q and A and meet with that aviation legal expert. I think that's in the works. And so, uh, there's lots of things going on right now. But the one thing I am perfectly confident in stating is I don't think anybody knows the solution. And so, I mean, at least I haven't responded, just because I don't know what to say. Because I don't want to say there's nothing we can do. I don't want to say that, no, the noise isn't loud enough. I don't want to say Frank's right, you're right. Right now, we, we just don't know. At least, I don't know. And so, uh, I don't know if that's much of an answer, but those are my thoughts. So, uh, feel free to call or strangle me, or any one of my council members who are too chicken to push the button at any time. And, uh, this, this isn't an issue that's going to be swept under the rug, because it's just not going anywhere, as evidenced by your video. So, my next, my only question for you is, have you sent that to the FAA? Have you sent, have you been contacting? Not pushing it aside, saying, "It's not my problem," but my advice to, uh, Justin out there was, don't just be saying this to council, be saying it to the FAA, be saying it to any possible entity that may or may not have jurisdiction, and we'll just keep pushing forward.
My question is, how do you determine how high that plane is? I mean, it looks kind of low, but, you know, sometimes estimating distances and heights and stuff can be a little bit deceiving, too.
There is a website that you can use to track most of the planes coming out of Longmont Airport.
Yeah, but some of those tracking things, they're way wrong. Um, you know, I mean, they're, they're based on GPS, uh, you know, they're, they're not all that accurate. No, they're not. But, but anyway, uh, I, I guess I kind of agree with everything that Brian said. You know, this is something we've been struggling with for two years, and I, I thought it was going to be real easy, you know, you get on council, we can do this, and then we're told, whoa, you really can't. You know, I mean, we can give away our $13 million worth of grant assurance, and, uh, you know, check down the airport, but I don't think that's a good option to either...
It's way easier talking about it now than dealing with a plane in a house.
But, uh, you know, I would also like to say that at executive session, we don't make any decisions. We discuss options, but to make a decision, we have to come back in front of council, in front of the public, and then vote on. So...
Was there talk of agenda and budget?
What do you mean?
Or the new airport attorneys?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't see that. It wasn't in the contract.
They're gonna get paid. Yeah, for the record, tell them, tell them on the record, they're gonna get paid.
They're gonna get paid for the work they do. I, I don't really know, even know exactly what all they've been tasked to do or how many hours they've charged at this point. I don't get involved in, you know, we don't get involved at the details of, uh, you know, we, we basically tell the city manager to go north, and he goes north, or to go south, and he goes south. But, uh, you know, at some point, we'll, we'll get the feedback as to what they're doing.
That's encouraging that you're considering a citizen Q and A session and to get the, the public's view on all of this.
Sure, it's a done deal. Right?
So, Mayor Council, uh, Mayor Council, one of the things that we talked about in the first meeting with the outside council is, obviously, we talked about a number of issues, but one of the points that we talked about was a community meeting, um, where, um, he can come in and actually have that Q and A session and answer some questions. I know there's been a lot of requests for individual meetings, but we really felt that community meetings in the best, the best way to handle this, especially with all the different issues that we're trying to work with. And he has the experience in terms of what, frankly, he can and can't say that could impact certain situations. And so, we're definitely talking about that. Um, we also have some more pressing issues that we're working on in this discussion, so we're moving through those first.
All right, well, thank you. Councilmember Van?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would venture to guess there's no one else in the city that's more impacted by Maohai than myself and my wife. So, I feel your pain, and thank you for the video. That's a good representation of what we experience pretty much every day and every hour, every daylight hour of every weekend. Um, so, the reason to bring in the outside council is, and the reason we brought in this particular firm is that they are the best. And we, if we're gonna address an issue like this, we want the best. I know $400 an hour sounds like a lot. How important is this issue to you? Do you want us, do you want us to invest as much as needed to take it as far as we can? Or, I mean, that would be the question I'd ask you.
I'm okay with that. I just would like to know what the agenda was and the plans forward, instead of just hiring someone and not really having an agenda for it.
Well, I think the, the agenda wasn't developed because we wanted to make sure that we could actually put them on retainer, and we could actually, we needed to develop where we need to take this. There are other issues other than Maohai, the airport. I can tell you that. And that, that is, um, another thing that we need to deal with in order to keep the airport moving ahead. And I'm pretty optimistic of moving forward. We may not get all we want. I don't think that works, that's the way it works anyway. But hopefully, we can come away with a solution that works reasonably well. And the airport can be a better neighbor than it is right now. So, just to let you know my perspective on it. They're loud, they're obnoxious, it's noisy, they're public nuisance, so.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, I'll give you a hint. It is the election year. If there's some candidate out there that says they're gonna do something about the trains, and they're gonna do something about airport noise, run the other way. Because I think that, um, I, I remember distinctly many years ago, as neighborhood leader for my neighborhood right here, and, and we hear the train. I mean, I wake up with the train all the time. And, um, new neighbor moved in right on the corner where the tracks were. And they came up to me about a year after they had moved in, after badgering me about, "What are you gonna do about the train going by my house?" I said, "Aww." Anyway, he went off and met with former mayors and current mayors, and basically, you know, they did what council member Badgley did, like this, you know? So, there's kind of like a pecking order. It's like God, the railroad, and airports.
Trench the train.
And trench the train, yeah. Well, that, that would, that would run into a little bit of money, too. Um, and I know that, uh, there are, there are a lot of people around the country. This is not a Longmont unique problem, either with airplanes or trains. There's a group that comes nationally to cities' conferences all the time called... There's a group that comes nationally to cities' conferences all the time called N-O-I-S-E. That, that's the abbreviation. I don't know what all the letters stand for. But they have sessions that former council member Katie Witt went to dutifully and reported back to us. And, um, they're working on the issue at a national level with municipalities. They're still not making any headway with the FAA on these issues. But, um, you know, it's nice to have misery, I mean, company in our misery. Um, however, the idea of what the budget and the agenda for the attorneys, I think, is a real legitimate question. And I, um, sorry that we did not address it that evening, that you were raising it. Um, and I think that part of, uh, part of, of having not enough specificity, specificity, I can't even talk about it. Not being specific in the contract is that, um, we did not want to limit ourselves to just specific items. Because there could be, as council member Moore mentioned, you know, broader scope. Nor is it a budget that's going to, um, exceed in our wildest dreams a hundred thousand, fifty thousand dollars. Because when you see four hundred dollars an hour, you know how the, the color, the clock can tick. So there is going to be, um, rigorous oversight to make sure we don't overspend. And, uh, I have confidence the city manager can control those costs. As far as, um, city staff members meeting with attorneys, which is, I think, a lot of people were thinking they wanted to be in that meeting, the initial meetings with the special counsel and staff members. And I think that that issue has been resolved, or at least responded to adequately, in that if you've got, it would be like council member Bagley would be my attorney, and it's attorney-client privilege going on, and somebody else would say, "Hey, I know both of you, I wanna be in the room with you." And it's like, well, you know, I don't know, maybe you don't want you to have, be in the room with me, because I'm paying, I'm paying him. I'm paying him, and you're not the client. I mean, you are the client in some ways, because you're a resident of the city and a taxpayer. But when strategy and, um, scope of work is being hammered out and direction given by the city manager to the council, then, uh, special counsel, I think that that's something that really falls into that attorney-client privilege. And it's not that anybody was purposely trying to shut people out. That is not something, I guess, tonight I've demonstrated I don't tolerate, um, and don't condone. So, uh, I really do think that we're going to have, um, a lot of things covered with this contract. And, um, I think when the city has hired outside counsel, you really want to get the best people you can, so the, so no one else can hire them. Once they're on the contract to us, other people can't go and hire them. Which I think is very important to have the top dog in the industry. And I know they have experience with other communities who've had severe noise problems, and I imagine Ms. Gibbs has pointed some of those things out to us, and she will again this evening.
Councilmember Christensen?
Um, thanks for coming. This has, uh, been a huge issue ever since I got on council, and long before that, and I, uh, as Councilman, uh, Bagley said, um, the FAA has jurisdiction. But the problem is, we don't, the FAA does not appear to be responding to citizens who try to contact them, doesn't seem to be responding to anybody. So, and I don't, so, um, I would like at this meeting to have it be, to have a member of the FAA who's in charge of this. And if this, we can't get the FAA to respond to this on local level, we need to go to the regional director or something, because if they have jurisdiction, then they need to actually respond to the citizens of the region that they're overseeing. Um, so if we have the community, and we have city council, we have the, the city manager, and we have the air, the new airport manager, if that has been hired yet, and the FAA, maybe we can finally hammer something out, because the airport is an important part of the city. But if so, some people want to expand it, if we're going to both expand it and continue to build residential, um, housing over there, it's, it's an impossible situation. We have to, without clarifying, without resolving some of the noise issues that we already have. And I think everybody agrees with that. We have, we have a big problem, and as Councilman Bagley said, we are not clear on how to fix it, but we are really trying to do something about it in, in multiple ways. Thank you.
Thanks. I appreciate those comments, and I, I definitely want to reiterate that it's not only the noise, but the flight paths that they are taking.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, the day you sent your December seventh email, I sent that to Tim, right after I got it.
That is correct.
And I know he responded to you.
That is correct.
So, and I'm looking at the two thousand four, two thousand four, two thousand fourteen noise log, and your complaint was registered, because you, you sent us an email on the fifteenth saying it wasn't investigated and wasn't registered. So I'm just letting you know. That's all been investigated. I know you didn't like, like the, his outcome.
Well, from the email, it sounded like he, uh, kinda was trying to talk me out of it, or decided on, Tim Barth decided on his own that it was not a legitimate concern.
I'm, I'm not, I don't know the specifics of all FAA regulations. I'm just telling you that he did respond, he, he, I know he responded to you. Um, and that your, um, complaint was logged, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, um, sure.
Somebody lost.
Mayor Council, there was a question about the budget, and, um, in the December appropriations, uh, we approved that in the December appropriations for fifty thousand. And so, at this point, it is, that is a cap for us. And, and so, uh, we will be managing that expense, uh, we will be watching it very closely. As a side note, when, as we were working through this, uh, one of the things that we were finding is that when you have Eugene May, Jeff Friedland, myself, Tim, and an assistant city manager, and we're moving, and Sean, and we're moving through this, there, there was pieces where we said we needed expertise, um, that frankly, we didn't have, because we weren't dealing with, we just don't deal with this on a regular basis. And, and so, in, in dealing with airports in my past careers, there is a time when you have to come in and really get that expertise to help you move through the nuances of the FAA, because there are a lot of nuances that you have to really, um, be cognizant of, because if you're not careful, you can end up on the other side of it with a different party in that process. And so, that's really a big part of this, and, and, and we are managing those conversations in order to help manage the expense, because we also know that, um, we, we don't have an unlimited pool of funds either. And so, just wanted to provide that information.
Thank you, Harold. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Uh, Harold, also a part of that, if I remember correctly, part of the contract was to look at, at the, um, airport rules and regulations and leases.
Correct.
So there's, it's not, there's multifaceted. If there's, the city's called into potential, who knows what may occur in litigation, it's all there. We, we have somebody that has Councilmember Belavison, it said, is, uh, top-notch in their field.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Kim Gibbs?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of council. My name is Kim Gibbs, and I live at seven four six eight Mount Sherman Road in Gunbarrow. On behalf of Citizens for Quiet Skies, I would like to speak about the airport in the context of navigation easements. At the airport advisory board meeting in February of two thousand and thirteen, the airport manager, Tim Barth, and Don Burchett with the planning department, gave a presentation regarding the proposed West Grange subdivision. The proposed subdivision was located at the southeast corner of Nelson Road and Seventy-Fifth Street, which is within the airport influence zone. In the meeting materials, Mr. Barth explained that since the early nineteen nineties, the city has used an airport disclosure statement to inform homebuyers of their proximity to the airport. Mr. Barth recommended that the city transition away from the airport disclosure and instead engage in the use of legally binding navigation easements. So what is a navigation easement? It is a conveyance of airspace over another property for use by the airport. As a result, the owner has restricted use of their property subject to the easement. The acquired easement rights typically include the right of, of flight of aircraft, like we saw in the video, the right to cause noise, dust, vibrations, to name a few. The navigation easement on the property runs with the land, so future owners are also restricted. To summarize in plain English, the airport disclosure does not protect the city from being sued for damages from excessive noise. The navigation easement does. It is a legally binding document. So why would they be having this discussion? And what does the homebuyer receive in exchange for signing the navigation easement? Mr. Barth provided two examples, one showing a dollar of consideration and the other a ten dollars. So for ten dollars, the homebuyer signs away their rights to peaceful, peaceful enjoyment of their land. During the meeting, Mr. Barth said that the navigation easement, um, said with regard to the navigation easement, the city has some protection. It doesn't stop complaints, but it protects the city. Who is the city? The dictionary defines a city as the people who live in a city, the citizens. Was Tim Barth aiming to protect the citizens of Longmont? Board member Morgan commented that because of the numerous, numerous complaints, the disclosure was not working well, and a stronger document or navigation easement would be in order. Board member Yates stated that the airport needs to be able to have airplanes come in and out without all these distractions and disturbances. I could tell her a thing or two about distractions and disturbances. And finally, board member Dahar said it is imperative to support the navigation easement project for the city's protection. At that meeting, the airport advisory board unanimously passed a motion to support navigation easements. However, it is my understanding that council did not move forward in considering this ill-conceived and nefarious plot to subvert the rights of citizens and homeowners. I hope that Tim Barth's successor will have a better sense of his role as a public servant. In my experience, talking to many residents, the ones who live near the airport expect to see and hear some airplanes. But they also have an expectation that there will be reasonable regulations in place to minimize the impact to the community. What we are living with now appears to be a lawless free-for-all where anything goes. I believe the city has two viable choices for managing the future of the airport, in part because of all the residential development. Number one, adopt a comprehensive noise abatement plan that includes mandatory limits on skydiving operations and addresses other local concerns, for example, touch and goes and helicopters, and other things. These limits may include reducing access to airport property for use as a parachute landing area. This is public land which is currently being given away for free. The other option is to close the airport. And it is an option, but we cannot move forward the way, with, the way things have been managed. It is unacceptable. It cannot continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Thanks for standing up so, such a late evening. Yeah, I, I don't know what else to say. I think we're doing the right thing, though, with hiring this, this firm, and I agree with, uh, Harold's decision to go out and try to hire the best, and we'll see what happens.
Mayor, how many more people do we have on the list at this point?
We have one more after Stephen.
Okay, so it's almost eleven. I, um, would move that we, uh, finish the, uh, last couple of folks on open forums list, and, uh, I guess, I don't know if we have an additional public invited to be heard call, but, um, and then finish up with council comments. So I move that we can go a little past eleven.
Second. Okay, let's, right on that.
Only for Stan.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, um, thank you, Mayor, uh, uh, Coombs and, uh, council. Uh, my name is Stan Toll, I'm a resident of the city of Longmont.
Okay, pass the seven to zero.
And, and, um, what I came here to talk about was basically two things. Um, one is, um, there was in the newspaper, this, uh, poor guy that was making a living, um, repairing, uh, window chips out of, out of a vehicle on Main Street. Now, this is something that a lot of people can, if they, if they're, uh, injuries or something like this, this is a survival type of employment. Uh, very critical to a person who's doing that type of work. Now, there's also the, the problem of, let's say, uh, other businesses thinking that this person is competing with them and using political muscle to try to force this person out of employment. When I was young, I, my mother was a planning commissioner in a newly incorporated town. And, uh, what, I grew up when I was in high school, and essentially, all these laws that the city of Longmont has were kinda adopted. And one of the things that you, you, when you have something like this, let's say, what was in the newspaper was, was spilling oil or something if you're a mobile mechanic. Well, you don't ban everybody from being able to have a job being a mobile mechanic. You have, like, maybe a license, or you have some regulations about how you do your work. And so, that, that, that's my first comment. The second comment is about the affordable housing situation. I came in here and talked to you, there's emergency things that this council needs to do. One of the things that I mentioned is that people who are desperate are being overcharged application fees. Application fees in most parts of the country are illegal, um, except for the person who actually gets the place. Collect, having a place open for, for, um, several months at a time, collecting thousands of dollars in application fees is, is actually, uh, it violates some of the, I, the, one of the ones is, it violates a lottery. It's, it's a phony lot, lottery. Uh, it could be, landlords that are doing that can be prosecuted under, under those laws. The other problem is, is that when we're talking about affordable housing, one of the problems with affordable housing is that there's a tremendous amount of subsidies, particularly in wealthy neighborhoods like Boulder County, Jefferson County. There's lots of subsidies for, let's say, a five hundred thousand dollar house. And the other thing is, is that to apply to build that place for a dollar a house, the permitting process, the sewers and everything, the percentage of, of cost on that is raw for, let's say, the, you know, five hundred thousand or more house. But if you are trying to put in a, a modular home, or you're trying to put something in, in a backyard, all of a sudden, you have a blizzard of, of things that are stopping people from doing that. And the cost is not proportional. These are some of the things that could be done without even making a tax. In fact, we have one person who built his own place in the river. Well, what did, what did the city do? Tore it down. Did the city give him a place to live? No. We have emergency situation where we have hundreds of people living in, in vehicles in this community, and they have no safe place where they, where they, in fact, the city is actively shutting down RV areas. We are having people dying in, uh, when they are camping out in the open, um, because because they don't have a safe place. So, you know, we can talk about maybe building something for habit, for humanity and stuff, but really, there are things, you know, just trying to, you know, things that can save people's lives really need to be done. And also, giving people a way to make a living without attacking them. Thanks.
Thank you, Sammy. We have one final lady. She's sitting behind, yeah, don't have your name, but come forward and speak there.
Do you recognize me? Okay. Hello, I'm Amanda Harper, and I live at 517 County Road 18, Longmont. I live in unincorporated Weld County, about a half mile east of Boulder County. And I've been here before when we had all of the fracking going on. And I felt really strongly about Longmont City proper and the fracking. And was kind of an outsider coming in, but having a really strong feeling. And, well, now it's happening to me, my own personal life. Only because I live in, about two miles south of the Walmart on County Road 1, I'm in between Erie, I'm in between Longmont. I don't know where Longmont starts at Weld County Road 1, but it's somewhere right around there. And there's a little, small community of people who have gotten together because Encana has come in and decided to put 12 wells in our, in a center field that's about maybe 800 feet off of County Road 1. And then another 12 wells on the same road you would use that goes around the corner, the facility site, for another set of 12 wells. And so there's this little road, 18, that goes into Weld County off of County Road 1, and it's a one-lane dirt road. And so, I don't know if you know, but 12 wells is a lot of wells. And it will devastate our community. We actually, we're kind of this high-density agricultural little area. There's a little landmark schoolhouse and a little cemetery there, a really old cemetery. And, yeah. So on this little road, there's eight of us that have egress and ingress only on this little road to the County Road 1. So what's happened is November 22nd, I found out about it completely by mistake, that this was going to be happening. And I put about 450 or more hours in trying to figure out my way through, getting a neighborhood group together, which we did, and then COGCC comments, which just ended Thursday. And what I'm doing is looking along that road from County Road 18, from Highway 66, on County Road 1, all the way to about Erie Parkway. And it's really beautiful. And it has a lot of trees and a lot of people living there along these roads. And I look on the Weld County side, and I see that the whole entire thing is at risk right now to have these huge industrial sites. If you've been north of Highway 66 on 1, there's an Encana site to the east, one mile, that's smaller than the one that's going to go right there. And I don't know what your views personally, or anything about pollution, or about, you know, tens of thousands of truck trips. And it's not Longmont City, and I understand that, but I'm kind of at a loss of where to go. I've been to the Weld County Commissioner meeting. I've been to the COGCC hearings. I've been, I was just at the Erie meeting this, this evening, the town hall meeting that they had. I don't know if you know about it. And what I have noticed is that you all have done a really amazing job, standing strong against, you know, I just read in the paper some of the words you're using for keeping Longmont safe. I've been going to Greeley, 450 wells in the town of Greeley, soon to be 900. 900. It's phenomenal. I was at a Weld County, Weld and Air and Water meeting last night in Greeley, finding out, because they've been together for three years, and I've been trying to find out what are they doing to protect. And I was seeing these maps, because John Adgate was there showing they're going to do some study on how it's affecting people in Greeley. I'm here to find out if there's any kind of jurisdiction, any kind of help we can get as a 14-member community, since we're not a huge neighborhood, like Erie has 300 people who talk tonight. If there's any kind of help that Longmont would be interested in, because it's going to affect, a certain way it affects Longmont. I mean, it's a little bit, it's a little bit south. But I'm also here because I want to say that I put a petition online. It's our second petition. We have one to protect us, we have about 300 and some signatures. But we're putting another one on for a state moratorium. A one-year moratorium on high-volume hydrofracturing, which is maybe like four or more wells. So anyway, I don't know if there's anything, you know, my story takes a long, but.
Well, I appreciate you coming here tonight. I don't have an answer for you. I mean, I.
It's totally out of.
Councilmember Bagory. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. There's, there's not a whole lot that the city can do. The reason why we were successful is that we had government coffers. We were home-ruled. A few of us were unfortunate enough to be tossed into that foray. And it was just a lot of, and there were some citizens here locally. I mean, so you had a political body that voted to pass oil and gas regs, and then you had citizens who, you know, passed the ban. And we're still, we're still neck-deep in it. My, my advice, you know, understanding a little bit now about how that process works. I hate to say it, you can't fight them. What I would do is work with Encana, get your 14 folks, talk to Encana, and work on well placement, you know? So if you can't beat them, what you can do is work with them to place the wells in the best possible location, given all circumstances.
Well, Boulder County actually put a five-page document on our COGCC website comments, because they were pretty concerned about it. It's going to affect Boulder County too, East Boulder County, because it's going to happen. We're the first. Well, we're not totally the first.
Well, there's tons.
Yeah, but the ones in the area I was talking about, Highway 66 to about Erie, we're the first, and they're going big. And on our COGCC comments, we have all the, you know, we gathered as much force of intelligence and creativity, and we do have a lot of mitigation.
I'm sorry. I feel for you.
Anyway, I really, really appreciate what you guys are doing here with this particular forum. It is amazing. Do you do it once a year? Is that what?
Once every five years.
It is really profound.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you.
And I also appreciate the stand you've taken. And I know you were forced into it a bit, but you're protecting the city. Everyone should do a tour of Greeley. Everyone in the state of Colorado should, who's in this fight.
I would just like to, you know, it's, it's real difficult. I know it's been difficult for you to tell the story, but it's really difficult to hear also. And, you know, it's too bad we can't annex yet. But I, that's not possible. The only thing that I can think of that the city could do to comment is that we paid for, the city, our sales tax, street sales tax revenue, paid for a lot of the refurbishment of Weld County line, Weld County Road 1. Both sides.
In that section?
From 66 down, I think we, we did a lot of it.
I think Boulder County maintains that section we live in.
Well, and, and I know that, though, that the traffic can be very heavy, and I don't know which route, they're going to have to have some specific route coming in and out of the site and all that kind of stuff. But I just think that it's great that you brought us the information and that we're aware of it. And, you know, I'm just a little concerned with the money we've invested in the roads and the intersections that, you know, might be used by additional truck traffic to maybe be aware of it and also look at it as a, a safety hazard with increased traffic through, you know, if you're, if some of the routes would be coming down from 66.
Well, no, it's more about Highway 119.
Yeah, and so.
That's where they're going to be coming from.
Yeah, and that's.
A lot, because that's I-25.
Yeah, and that's the state's jurisdiction. And, but I'm glad you made us aware of it. And I know that it's, it's very interesting when you cross I-25, how the landscape changes.
Yeah. And. It does fit. It don't fit, in my, you know, I have, I have a view that a lot of those things that currently are in these wide sweeping areas, and this is not. This is a little contained, lots of trees, lots of homes, even though it's rural and everyone would think, wow, you have a lot of space compared to wide sweeping areas where you can, I, like, for instance, the one that's one mile north off of County, Highway 66 on Road 1, had, I took a video, is space. Except for the people in Boulder County, there's two houses right across the street. But, you know, this is remarkably different, and there is going to be more fight. And I was just coming here to.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thanks for coming. I don't know if you remember me, but you used to be my yoga teacher or something like. I understand how deep your commitment to spirituality and health and agriculture. It's very sad this is happening. And they're just trying to make money, and they don't really much care what's above the earth. They care what's underneath. So that's why they're choosing that. It's not to be mean, but, you know, I, I, you know, as the last-ditch effort, I think Councilman Bagory is right, is see if they, there's something that they can do that's a better deal. But I, I would think that your best bet too is to try to get Boulder County to be more active in this, because it is going to affect them. And it is just, as you say, it's just the beginning. And I wish that we had some kind of jurisdiction of this area, but we don't, so.
Right.
But thank you for telling us the story, because it reminds us how important it is for us to, to have taken a stand on the fracking issue within the city limits.
And it's not fracking as usual, you know, the first, I've been living with it now for six years with, or five years, with one to three wells coming in, and whatever pollution comes with that, whatever truck traffic. How to fit when it first came, but then I got used to it. But this is, this is an industrial site. It's an industrial, it should be industrially zoned, and it's an industrial site. It's not just fracking as usual.
Well, I don't think, unfortunately, that we're going to be able to solve your, I mean, we can simplify your problem tonight, but we can't solve it.
I know you can't.
And it's getting kind of late tonight, so I think we're going to move on to.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for being here, Amanda. It's mayor and council comments. So is there any comments from council members yet? Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, regardless of the hour, I have appreciated the input we got from the citizens tonight. Not only informative, but it's also interesting to take in these points of view. I mean, we covered topics from social issues, from specifically the Hispanic community and the minority communities, housing, sustainability, pending council action on, on the code amendments, recreation, even civil rights. Who would have guessed, we would have heard from about mile high, or fracking, for that matter. So I, I think it's a good thing to do, and I would encourage council to continue to have this event every year. It's important that we give the citizens an opportunity to discuss their issues in an open forum like this, so, thank you.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I want to say how much I, I appreciate people coming to the open forum tonight. And I'm sorry we couldn't get to everybody, but I guess it'd be nice if, well, we did this one year twice. And I don't know if we want to do it a second time sometime in the summer to just see where, chart our progress, where we've gotten from here. The other thing I want to remind people, and I think this was really, made me think of it, is Councilmember Santos's comment that, you know, one hour a month, we do a coffee with council with two council members and a staff member there. So there is opportunity outside of this forum to dialogue with council members. Well, whatever you want to add, that's fine. I've never really come out of the coffee with council bloodied or bruised. So it's all very civil, and I would encourage people to come to that smaller format also. It, it really is helpful for us when we have some new ideas and we see people very concerned about what's happening in the community. I also wanted to express my appreciation to the Multicultural Action Committee, or it might be called soon, the Multi, the Inter-Cultural Action Committee, as was suggested earlier this evening, for the Martin Luther King Celebration yesterday. Great speakers, you know, having the class of dreamers there and having them sing a song was great. I also wanted to acknowledge, I was able to talk to several of the students from the Silver Creek Leadership Academy who were presenting their projects. And I told people that I would give them some exposure. So there were three students I spoke to. One that is bringing a project called "The Wall," which is a presentation by Jamie Ut that focuses on creating diverse and inclusive communities by giving people the tools to change from within and become more open-minded and accepting of other people. So the event will be at Silver Creek High School Gym on April 25th, 2015, open to the community. And Kari Von Bernath is the person putting this on as her capstone project. She's also looking for donations to help pay for the presentation. Next one is a project called Calvin's Hat, and it's that from Amanda Nelson. And Amanda is getting people to knit hats for premature babies and also folks that have lost a child and need a hat. And they're collecting yarn donations, and there's a Saturday community knitting event that's held at La Vida Bella Coffee House. So that contact information can be available. And then there's another student who is putting on self-defense classes. And that is going to be from Angela Walter, and it's a series of classes. And I imagine if you go to the Silver Creek Leadership Academy, you can find all these projects. And I also want to say, give a shout out that the El Comité Dinner is the 28th of February. And I would like to challenge the school district, the school board, to see whether or not, you know, who can get the most members of their, their board there. And it's been a friendly competition that we've won several years and lost a couple of years. So I want to throw that challenge out to the school board to attend. And then remind folks that CML is having the Legislative Workshop coming up the second week of February, if you haven't signed up for that. So that's it.
Councilmember Christensen.
Okay, I got a traffic ticket a while ago for driving too closely on Third Avenue. So just so everybody knows that city council people don't get any special privileges. So I, anyway, so I went to the Bad Girl School of Traffic stuff. And I just wanted to say that this, the, I would encourage anybody who gets a traffic ticket to go and refresh your memory about. your memory about why it's important to actually follow the rules. And, uh, the, the two officers who give this, um, do a really wonderful job. The three hours don't exactly fly by, but they really do, do go quickly. It's wonderful information and I'm very appreciative of that, that I, I have been to the, um, Traffic School in San Francisco, which is run by actual comedians and it's more fun, but it's, uh, this is better information, frankly. Um, it really is run by comedians. Um, anyway, of course it costs a lot more too, I think. Um, I also wanted to say thank you to the city for Martin Luther King, uh, Day Celebration. It was wonderful. Um, Councilman, uh, Bagley's daughter, uh, was the, um, co-EMC. Yeah, co-EMC. And it was, um, she was great. Uh, and all the people doing this were great. And I, I would like to remember, remind people, all the people who came to speak tonight, something that Martin Luther King said that has always been important to me. Our souls die when we remain silent about things that matter. So thank you for everybody who came.
Captain Member Billy.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, and thank everyone who came tonight. Uh, we, we really do appreciate you coming and, and speaking and I, I want to thank you for electing me to sit on this august body and I want to thank my fellow council members for putting up with me as well. I, uh, it's a, it's a lot of fun, really. And I enjoy the, the subject matter and even, yeah, the arguments we get into, I think, are, are civil and, and fun and I just enjoy being here. I would like to mention my business of the week, uh, Firehouse Subs, 2343 Clover Basin Drive. Uh, and also if you have a suggestion for a business of the week, please, uh, email me, let me know what that is. I, I love to, to try out new places and, and my caveat has always been that they have to be a member of the Chamber of Commerce. Um, those will get mentioned before the others, but I will mention others as well. Um, I want to thank our staff for hanging around and helping to answer questions. That's always helpful. Um, and I think that's, I, Martin Luther King thing was great. Strider, thanks for sharing your story. It was awesome. And, uh, and I bet in the next few weeks you may have a, a new bike.
Captain Member Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, um, another open forum's in the books. Very interesting and informative evening. Um, I, I do appreciate everyone's views and, um, and concerns. Um, the thing, oh, um, the end of the month, oh, lost the date, sorry. Um, Coffee with Council, as Councilmember Levinson said, the 31st at, oh, I had it. Oh, sorry. La Vida, it's the mayor and I, at, uh, La Vida Bella, 475 Main Street. The, the two of us will be there. Um, yeah, as Councilmember Levinson said, and I've always said, Coffee with Council's probably one of the best venues. Come talk to us, you get two of us and you get a member of staff and, uh, it's a lot less formal than this, actually. Um, so you get two for the price of one, unless somebody doesn't show up. Um, but, uh, thank you all and, uh, look forward to a good evening and thanks, thanks staff for, for hanging out.
I'd also like to thank, uh, Silver Creek Leadership Academy, students who worked on, uh, the Martin Luther King Day. Uh, also like to echo, uh, what a great job that Danny Bagley did co-EMCing the event. Um, let's see, I had one more thought. It's, I think my brain's like shutting down, so I guess I'll win. So now it's time for, uh, city manager, any comments? City attorney, any comments? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.